Great. Good morning, I'd like to call this meeting to order if we could all please rise please with Pastor Jeff Chitwood would come forward with the Anchor Christian Church. Is he here? To lead us in our invocation? Okay, Arlene, would you please lead us in the invocation this morning?
Dear Lord, please look after all of our public safety officers, all of our armed forces. Please lead us today in a sense of camaraderie and goodwill towards all the citizens. And please keep us all safe and out of harm's way, in the Lord's name, amen.
Wonderful, thank you, Arlene. Councilman Schlatter, could you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
It will be an honor, Mayor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Caramba.
Here.
Here.
Councilman Schlatter. Mayor Simmons.
Here.
Councilman O'Flynn.
Here.
Councilman Gibson.
Here.
Councilman Forbes.
Here. Great, now at this time, if Dr. Steve McIntosh could come forward, please, to introduce a special guest of ours. The new president of Florida Gulf Coast University, Dr. Michael Martin.
Morning, council, city staff, for the record, Steve McIntosh. And it's my honor to present the president of Florida Gulf Coast University, Dr. Michael Martin.
Thank you, Steve. To Mr. Mayor and members of the council, thanks for the opportunity just to get acquainted. I'll be very brief because I know you've got real business to attend to, but I just want to emphasize what a few of us talked about briefly before. In my role as the representative of FGCU, I want you to know that I'm committed and we're committed to be remaining and building on a wonderful relationship with this community. We want to be a constructive partner to make life better, not only for our students, but all the citizens of Benita Springs and the state of Florida. So, please know that the door is open, the phone is open, the email is available, whatever it is. If there are things we can do and do better, we'll certainly work on that. But it's a great, it's a great pride to be at an institution that has grown up with a community, continues to grow with that community, and is committed to being an active and energetic partner as well. I replace a wonderful guy in Wilson Bradshaw. Brad is a guy I've known for a long time, and to be able to follow him and to follow the example that he's set is not only an honor, but a challenge. And I jokingly told him that it's a peculiar situation where the guy retiring, the guy replacing the guy retiring is older than the guy retiring. So, I'm the older guy of the bunch, but I hope I can keep up the pace he set. And I certainly invite your input in any way and on any topic that's of interest to you to make sure that we retain this great relationship. And it's going to be fun to get more acquainted with the community, you've got a lot of interesting stuff going on. So, as a former member of the City Planning Commission at a little town in Oregon, and as a curious individual, it's just a great fascinating place to watch in and of itself, but we'll hopefully be a good partner in that. So, thank you all very much, and as I've learned to say very energetically, go Eagles.
Well, thank you, Dr. Martin, and welcome, on behalf of Benita Springs, Dr. McIntosh, thank you very much. And if you could, both of you, please come forward and counsel, if we could go down, I'd love to get a picture of everybody, please.
Right around here? Okay.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Congratulations, Steve.
Squeeze in here a little bit, I'll go sideways.
You want to look there first? Okay, now if you look here.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, great, nice to meet you. Before the following. Great, and now we'd like to welcome our state senator Kathleen Pasodomo.
Morning, council members and Mr. Mayor, I'm thrilled to be here in Benita. I'm just always glad to be back home. Tallahassee is fun, but it's much better back home. I just wanted to, you know, I was going to give you a sort of legislative update, but it's so long ago since we went through the first session and then the special session, and it's been in the newspapers, so I just wanted to make a few comments. I know that today you're going to be talking about your legislative priorities, and we are going to have a Lee County delegation meeting sometime this fall, probably in December. Rep Caldwell, I think, is still the chair, and he'll call that date so that, you know, once you've established your priorities, you could present them to the delegation so that we could collectively support your initiatives. One of the things that is always important is that, for me to mention, is that our delegation in southwest Florida, whether it be the Collier delegation or the Lee delegation, we all work together and we all support each other's projects. And the number one priority of Benita unfortunately did not get funded, and that was the improvements to Benita Beach Road. And that was not with, we pushed very hard for it, but we've met with Councilman Forbes and we've met with your consultant, Carol Green, and we're going to move forward next year and we're going to get that done. And I'll talk to Senator Benequisto and Rep Rodriguez, and we're going to all pursue it. The one thing that, I just want to make sure you realize that the only reason it was vetoed is because it was not in FDOT's five-year plan. So, we're going to have to work with FDOT and try to get that organized and also shovel-ready and some of the other things that I think will be important. I wanted to mention a little bit about medical marijuana because there's been some concern. You, as a city, have, and I'm not sure how we end, this was sort of a compromise, you have a choice. You can ban facilities that sell medical marijuana in total if you like. That's going to be a local government decision. But if you do decide to allow the sale through a facility, as you know, it can't be through a pharmacy because it's illegal federally. So, it would have to be a separate facility. We set up parameters of how they're going to be, how they're going to look, and, you know, we don't want to have medical marijuana being sold from like head shops or things like that. So, we're strictly controlling it. But if you do decide to allow it, you can't restrict it more than you would restrict a pharmacy location. In other words, we don't want you to, and I know you wouldn't want to do that, say, okay, if you're going to sell medical marijuana, you've got to go around the corner and back behind a warehouse because that, of course, creates a problem. So, you can make that decision, that's what the law is now. We may end up tweaking it in next year depending on how it works. The gambling issue, I know that was a big deal for Benita, and we just couldn't get it across the finish line again. And it's even got more complicated because the courts have held that only the legislature can decide what expansion can be done. So, the vote that the citizens of Benita took to authorize the expansion of the Benita Dog Track apparently doesn't mean anything to the Florida Supreme Court. So, I'm not sure what's going to happen there. I know that you were looking forward to that becoming a destination, a facility, and I'm not, we don't know what's going to happen. I think we're going to continue to pursue that. So, those are the three things. And then lastly, I just want to mention something. You know, a lot of people don't get where the state budget's going, and I got from my, from our staff, basically, a breakdown of the state budget, and it is amazing that we are now up to forty, almost forty-two percent of our state budget goes to healthcare. That's a huge amount. Education is almost thirty percent. So, and that's higher ed in K through 12. So, when we're talking about, you know, state government, that's, you know, almost just like three percent. Environment issues, natural resources is four and a half percent. Transportation and economic development, about sixteen percent. And then the criminal and civil justice, you know, the prisons, FDLE and the like, is only six percent. So, you know, when we're trying to put a budget together and you look at those huge numbers that go into education and healthcare, when more than half of our state budget is two line items, it's, for us, the hardest part is how do we help local governments and local communities with their needs when we're stuck with a giant bill for education and healthcare? Which, of course, is good, but it's something to bear in mind. So, with that, I just thought I'd kind of mention it. If you, the other thing is to, you know, I mean, I'm here for you guys, whenever you need me, I will be here. You know, I worked very well with Carol Green on issues relating to Benita. I think she lives in my office and is there constantly with, you know, reminders of what's going on in Benita. You know, the one thing that I'm very happy about was the Fatihatchee Strand funding that the governor did not veto, so I was like, woo-hoo. And, you know, I think next year we're going to push for whatever initiatives you have. And the only caution I say is based upon the way our budget is. Pick something that's really important that we think we can get across the finish line, and we'll all work on it so that we can, you know, help the residents of Benita. With that, answering any questions or I'll let you move on with your meeting?
Great, thank you, Senator, thank you very much. And yes, as I kind of do, I'll start at one end. Fred, if you have a comment or a question, and obviously applaud your efforts and know your great relationship with Senator Pasodomo, but thoughts or questions or?
No, fortunately, I had an opportunity to talk to her before the meeting. She's actually very much into trying to do more on getting septic tank conversion over to city sewer systems or private sewer systems, whatever is available. So, she's pushing on that.
Right, and as I educated myself, for those that wonder about that, that are kind of thinking with a northern mind, you can't because it's a completely different ball of wax down here with septic systems with our water table down here. So, thank you for that, and thank you, Pasodomo, we look forward to working together on that issue and others.
And I'll mention something that you might find very interesting, a statistic that I read, you know, when the University of Florida did the Everglades study, and they mentioned that there was some, they did some water testing of the Kaluushatchee River, and you know what they found in it? Splenda. Now, of course, I'm not using Splenda anymore. Splenda does not break down, and it didn't come from farm implements or from cows, it was human waste. So, what's happening, obviously, are the septic systems that are within proximity of the river are leaching, and there is human waste water in the Kaluushatchee River. So, those are the things that we need to look at as a community and, you know, bite the bullet.
Right, right. Mike?
I'm good, just thank you for everything you're doing.
Great, thanks. Pete?
Senator, thanks, and thanks for coming here, really appreciate it. Just, what's your take on the environmental stuff, as in Florida Forever, which got cut? And also back to Amendment One, that whole debate about, you know, the general funding was shifted over to that, and why can't more be used for acquisition projects and such?
Let's go, you go back to what I started to mention. If fifty percent of our state budget is education and healthcare, the question that I ask everybody who comes to see me is, what is your priority? The environment is a huge priority, and we have put in a lot of money, particularly through the Senate Bill 10 and some of this Everglades issue. But if we, you know, I know where people are coming from. They want to buy more land to keep it out of development, which causes some of the problems on other issues. But if you keep buying land and you don't have enough money to maintain it, it's going to become a real problem. So, you know, it's a never-ending battle. We are going to continue to look to, you know, we have to fix the problem with the Everglades. We have to spend the money. We are appropriating what we think are appropriate dollars. Some people don't think it's enough, but where are we going to get it from? Because general government isn't that much. Transportation is critical, so it's going to have to come from healthcare or education. And if we do that, the people on the other side are going to raise Cain with us.
Great, thank you, Pete. Steve?
Senator, it's a pleasure to have you here, thank you so very, very much, and I don't have any questions.
Great, thanks. Greg?
I just, excuse me, thank you very much for what you've done this year and what you're going to do in the future. My only question is, is we talk about having a Lee County delegation meeting and a Collier County delegation. What about having one where both delegations are together, where we can all have the same message out there? Because, you know, Collier's going to have theirs and Lee's going to have theirs. And if it's something that's common, that way they hear both sides of it instead of you carrying the water for both counties. They hear it right from us.
And we can have the meeting about two miles south of here, mile and a half south of here? We'll do it right on the county line, how's that?
Well, I was thinking, yeah, even if we could, with our new partnership or with the new president of FGCU.
No, but it's a great, that's a great point, Greg, absolutely.
I love that idea. I'll talk to Rep Caldwell. If we can't get it this year because of timing, I think it would be useful. I actually serve on three delegations because I also represent Hendry County, which is kind of a different, whole different lifestyle. And so, I go out to Hendry and then we have Collier. But I think because Collier and Lee are coastal, that would make a lot of sense. And I'll, you know, I'll talk to them about it, and I think it makes a lot of.
Especially when we're talking road projects with US 41 going in between the two counties, I think it'd be a great idea. Because, I mean, I think that Collier's just, is going to benefit from whatever we do with the quadrant study or the US 41 corridor.
And I think Florida Gulf Coast would like that because they have to, and Hodges as well, participate in both. Because there are a number of, and there are a number of the nonprofits that do ask for state funding that come to both delegation hearings. So, it might be a good idea for us to come to everybody instead of them coming to us.
Yeah, no, it's a great point, and, you know, I've mentioned it before, and obviously you know, but if you come up Vanderbilt Road and hit Benita Beach Road and continue west, you know, the south side of Benita Beach Road until you get, you know, Barefoot Beach is Collier, and on the north side, I mean, so that's a perfect example of, the cars going back and forth on that road don't know there's a county line there, and it shouldn't matter, right?
That's right, well, and also economic development. We're doing a lot of initiatives on the private sector through economic development incentives through the, you know, Chamber of Southwest Florida and other organizations. I feel better if we could work together because we have, and I mentioned this when I started, we have a great delegation that we all support one another, and we always talk about southwest Florida. And it all revolves around the universities enveloping all of southwest Florida and things that we could do as a group. And so, I like your suggestion, and I'll talk to my colleagues and have that discussion.
Great, thank you very much. Amy? Yeah, thank you.
I'd like to add my thanks to all that you do and your continued support for us, and particularly our quadrant project, which is desperately needed. And I just wanted to mention that I think one thing that continues to be extremely important to all municipalities is that we have home rule. And even if the issue is something that we're interested in, how those bills are written and whether it takes authority away from us, is for those municipalities that I think are functioning fairly well, which I include Benita Springs in, we like to do it our way, so to speak. So, it's hard, I understand that there are municipalities that don't function well, but those of us who have good control of what we're doing, we'd like to continue to have that ability to do that. So, the negative is important to us also in addition to the positive.
I agree with you, and I should have brought that up. There were a number of home rule bills that passed this year, signed by the governor. A lot of them were, the one that comes to mind is the gas station franchise bill. And, you know, the problem we have is that we live in a community where our elected officials, local elected officials, are smart, knowledgeable, business-oriented, understand their, what needs to be done for their communities. We have areas over on the east coast that, basically, that home makes a rule that negatively impacts everybody else. And some, the example of that one bill that passed was, in Boca Raton, they passed an ordinance that said that all signs have to be brown. Starbucks went crazy because they said, "We're green." And if we put a brown sign, it could negatively impact our business. And so, we had to include in the big omnibus construction bill, an ordinance prohibiting a local government from, you know, telling a franchise they can't use their franchise colors or whatever. And the same thing in Orlando, along the corridor to the airport, they passed an ordinance that made the signs almost illegible. And so, tourists were complaining they couldn't compare gas station prices. And, you know, to me, I am a believer in home rule, but then I see some of these bills, the one that, there was one bill that passed that said, "No dogs or cats can be sold in," I think it was Coral Gables or somewhere, I can't remember where it was. Because they wanted to preclude puppy mills, so they threw the baby out with the bathwater. And so, we, you know, we start looking at these things, and the business community is saying, "You are hurting us." So, I'm, my feeling is, let's pick our battles. The big battles are going to be things like the bill on the Community Redevelopment Agency that would have basically taken away any authority for y'all to do that. I was able to thwart that with some of my colleagues because I think when it comes to something like that, you should be able to do that. Those kind of bills that are really, really important to a community. So, we need to have that conversation. I don't know how to do it. The big one that's going to come up is Airbnb. And Naples, it's huge because we have these giant mansions that are now daily rentals next to people who live there, and they're not happy and they're not collecting sales tax. I don't know if you have that as a problem with Benita yet, but you will.
We do.
So, those are the battles that I think we need to fight together because I agree with you that local government should control those type of, whether it be zoning or, you know, I don't know. But there's going to be a lot of discussion next session on that, I think.
Right, right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, I mean, thank you, Senator, and I would just want to, you know, I've known you for a number of years now. You're a hard worker, you're a straight shooter, not that, you know, I mean, no, no, but I mean, what you say, and you, look, you set realities and you set realistic goals. And then, we need to go for them, we need to work harder for them next session, myself included. I do want to apologize about our legislative day that was actually scheduled this year for the same day as the ribbon cutting for our high school. So, I did not see you in Tallahassee this year, I guarantee you will next session. And, you know, I know you're only a phone call away, and please, for other members of the council that don't know the Senator as well as I and maybe some others do, please get to know her better and get together, have coffee, have lunch, what have you. And we're delighted that you are our state senator, and thank you for being here this morning.
Thank you all very much, have a great meeting.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move on now. We have an agenda move here. We're going to move on to item 12, I guess, if there's no objections. Do you want to, Audrey, or would you like to spool this up, please?
Sure, I will. Alex Boswell-Ebersole, Assistant City Attorney, for the record. This is a review of a petition requesting dissolution of a CDD. And it's also a second reading and public hearing of the CDD, and that's a community development district. The rationale for this petition and the dissolution is that the CDD, the community development district, lacks any further financial obligations and/or maintenance responsibilities. The entity was created by ordinance, so it has to be dissolved by ordinance. There was an appropriate advertisement of this hearing. And then, the final thing I'll say is that that staff has reviewed the petition, obviously, and finds it sufficient. The applicant, Representative of the applicant is also here, if you have any further questions.
Okay, council?
So moved.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second, and there is public, and there is public comment. But council, is there further discussion, or do you want to wait until after public comment? Fred? Okay, all right, public comment at this time? Members of the public that would like to speak, please come forward at this time. Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor Smith.
How are you?
Great.
For the record, Jim Weeks, Weeks Fish Camp, council members, mayor, support staff. Good morning to you.
Morning.
I know it's not on the agenda, but I felt it's important to bring this up.
Well, not at this time, I'm sorry. We'll have another public comment, this is specific.
To the agenda.
To the thing, okay.
Yes, to this item.
No problem.
Okay, thank you very much, that's okay, we'll see you, we'll see you in a little bit. Any other member of the public on this issue? Okay, seeing none? There's been a motion? Oh, okay. If there's anybody else that would like to speak, please either raise your hand or get in line, that would be easier for me. Thank you, good morning.
Good morning, sir.
On this issue, thank you.
Yes, John West.
Yes, sir.
I have four items that I'd like to discuss.
On this, pertaining to this issue here?
Agenda items.
No, no, this is just for this, I apologize. We're going to have public comment at another time.
Because it's second, it's after Ms. Pasodomo, public comment.
We just, we moved this item around, I apologize. I know. I'm sorry about that. We're going to have to ask you, anybody else on this item only from the public? Okay, seeing none, council discussion, Fred, you had something?
No, I had nothing.
You had nothing, okay. Counsel? Okay, there's been a motion and a second, further discussion, seeing none, roll call, please.
Councilman Dewitt.
Aye.
Councilman Schlatter.
Aye.
Mayor Simmons.
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Forbes.
Aye.
Councilwoman Caramba.
Aye.
Okay, great, now, folks, we're going to move on to public comment on agenda items. Please come forward on agenda items only, please. Thank you.
Okay, John West, again. I have four items I'd like to bring up. Item 10E, I'm all in favor of the block grant. As a president of a community association a few years ago, we did receive assistance to beautify a kind of semi-failing community, and the block grant did it very nicely, thank you. I'd also like to comment on item A, 10A, city manager's performance evaluation. I must say that the city manager, whatever you say, he responds to emails like a shot. Whether it's during the week or weekend, he fires back. You may not like what he's saying, but he'll certainly respond. And I, as a member of the public, really appreciate that. The other thing is 10B, the deep well injection. I think this is an important item. More and more stuff is being sent down underground, and we don't know what's in that, and we don't know what effect it has on the environment. This stuff tends to leach upwards, and it could affect our water supplies, even if it's 10,000 feet down. We don't know what effect it has, and I'm glad to see that this item is on the agenda. The other thing is item consent, agenda item C. The property Bamboo Village has been in the possession of the city for 15 years. It used to be a mobile home community, and soon after the city became a city, the inhabitants there were expelled, and the property, the city paid over $2 million for it. And what has the city done with that since? It's still there, it's being used at the moment for the dumping of stuff for the old 41 improvements. But it's still there, it's still vacant, and I don't know what plans the city has for that property. In the meantime, we have a. In the meantime, we have a lease from the state, and I don't understand, do you mind if I continue?
There is other times, but if you.
I would appreciate.
Well, I know you'd appreciate it, so why don't we continue for just another minute, please?
To cut a long story short, we don't get any income from this property, and under a lease, we're supposed to get income, that's what we have a lease for. The property is in disrepair, the lease says it's in good repair, but it isn't. There's nothing there. The boat launch is not working, it needs to be repaired. The other thing is that there are provisions for asking the state to relinquish its ownership of the property, and I recommend that we set about trying to get that relinquished. There are also provisions for exchanging the property for another, and I have in mind, for example, the Riverdale property, we could conveniently exchange it for. So, I hope that this item can be pulled and a proper discussion held on this matter.
Wonderful. Thank you for your comments. Thank you for being here, as always. Other members of the public that would like to speak, please come forward. Good morning.
Good morning, everybody. Briefly watching the council meeting on the TV, and you guys pulled me out of the yard, so this is kind of in reference to the deep well injection pumping of sewage treatment effluent and sludge, and also to the presentation by State Senator Pasidomo, which, I'm sorry I wasn't here, I just caught her out in the hallway. I would like to ask you if in your legislative priorities, you could include sending a letter to these, our representatives and whoever else needs to be contacted, either the House Majority or the State Senate Leader, to oppose statewide fracking? There's been a bill circulating, and I know that the State Senator, I mean, the Senate Majority Leader, House Speaker, have not been in favor of it, but this city council voted unanimously, not this one, sorry, the past one, including the mayor and Mike, voted unanimously, and Councilman Slakka, sorry. Thank you, sir.
Don't forget Steve Coe.
No way. Thank you, sirs, for doing that. If you need, I can help you by drafting a letter and sending our resolution to them, asking them to please approve that. It's very important to our water and also municipal home rule rights, because part of the past efforts to strip our home rule rights, to have some control over what happens in our community, has been part of the fracking movement forward in Florida, and I think it's very important for us to state that, you know, hey, we don't want you keep preempting us, you know, that's what we're here for, and I like to think I'm home rule here on this issue. So, thank you, Fred, for bringing this forward, this is really important. Okay, thanks.
Wonderful. Thank you, Martha. Morning, Rick.
Good morning. Good morning, Rick Steinmeier. This is Florida Power and Light. I'm in favor of solar, as much as we can use. I'm just concerned about hurricanes and what kind of wind resistance these panels might have during a storm. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Rick. Good morning, Kathy. How are you?
Happy time.
For the record, Kathy McGrath. I'm sorry Senator Pasidomo left, because I told her personally before, that I'm so pleased with what she has done for us in Tallahassee, and I supported her, and I reminded her every time that, I still have that bright red t-shirt hanging in there for the next election, which I'll do it again. But, no, I was going, and then it was funny, I went out to the car to get something, and I thought, gee, I forgot to tell her someone who I really, really respect and like and works with her is Carol Green, and I looked, and there goes Carol Green walking right by me. So, if that was just an opportune, because Carol's been wonderful for us, too. That's all, I just wanted to thank Senator Pasidomo.
Great, thank you, Kathy. Other members of the public wishing to speak? Okay, seeing none? We're going to move along now to proclamations and presentations for our zoning board chairman, Larry Kurlander. Is he here? There he is. Okay.
Mayor and council.
Yes.
Mayor, if I might just make a brief background, and Larry's going to talk, but I put this on the agenda, because at yesterday's zoning board meeting, and as Larry will explain, they not just unanimously, but robustly agreed to have a workshop on various things, so I just wanted to make that point.
Great.
That's why this is here.
Absolutely. Thank you, Pete. Welcome.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the invitation, and thank you for allowing me to serve on the zoning board. You have a very strong, committed zoning board that is engaged on every issue and is very excited about the future of this city. I believe our mission is to provide you with the most thorough and thoughtful analysis of every application that comes before you, and give you our best judgment and recommendation on how to move forward. After all, you're the deciders ultimately. After two and a half months of reading the Land Development Code and the master plan, and after attending several meetings now, I've been on the board for six months, it occurred to me that we're not giving you all we should be giving you. There are a variety of reasons. Some of it is the Land Development Code itself, what comes before us, past practices, and the result is that we, as a board, yesterday enthusiastically voted to hold a workshop on August 15th for three purposes. It will be, we asked that it be led by the Theriak Law Firm, and for three purposes that our workshop would be. Tell us what the current law requires the applicant to present to us, and ultimately to you. Second, tell us what are the best practices in the state of Florida? And third, we want to have a dialogue among the board, and hopefully you, at the end of it, what's on everybody's mind? How can we approve our processes? What do you expect of us? Are we doing the job that you appointed us to do? And so, on August 15th, the Theriak Law Firm will lead a discussion along with the others, and we hope that you'll be able to join us, and so, I heartily invite you to consider this invitation and urge you to attend.
Thank you. What time?
It's going to start at nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock, okay.
And it'll probably run all day.
Wonderful. Wonderful. Thank you very much. Counsel, do you have, Amy?
I just want to compliment you in spearheading this, because since I've been on the council for a year, I felt that we needed to have some kind of input into how our land development decisions are being made, and just the points that you brought up were things that have been in my mind, so I appreciate that you're doing that. We're going to have a presentation today on, excuse me, on the community, from the Community Development Department, that would, I think, start that, because even though I'm a new councilperson, I felt that we all could use some brushing up on how these things are all affected, mostly from practice, that's where I had the question. So, I think you've really done a great thing, and I want to thank you for that.
Thank you very much.
Right. Thank you, Amy. Greg?
No, I just, thanks for your spearheading it, and I think it's worthwhile. My only problem is, I think some of us have one-on-ones that day with the.
It was discussed, and it would be, it's not a training session where it's very formal, it's an interactive session, so if you need to leave the room for a half hour for each one-on-one.
Great, thank you. Steve?
Good.
Pete, anything for?
I think it's a great idea, and thanks for doing it.
Wonderful. Mike?
Thank you.
I applaud the idea and fact of going to do it.
Great. Thank you, and I look forward to, obviously, working with you, and will be there at some point on the 15th.
Sure. Thank you very much.
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
Have a great day.
Thank you so much. Okay, moving along, we now have an errata sheet, we're going to move on to a presentation by Florida Power and Light Company. Good morning. How are you? Welcome.
Well, thank you. Thank you for having me. My name's Kathleen Campanella, and I am a program manager for FPL's Solar Now program, which I'm very excited to talk with you all about today. If I can get this, did I do that? I didn't do that, did I?
No.
Okay. But my clicker is not working.
Welcome to the clicker.
Yeah, welcome to our clicker world. We'll get it fixed.
Everybody.
It's a universal clicker that everybody has.
Yeah, right.
At least it's just one of me.
It's like the TV remotes, right? Just get one that.
I have a hard time with those. FPL Solar Now program is a community-supported solar program that we offer to our customers. It's a completely voluntary program, and customers have the option of contributing $9 per month on top of their normal electric bill, and those funds go towards building solar projects in their local communities. FPL installs, operates, and maintains the projects at no cost to the city. Currently, there are over 1,000 participants in Lee County, about 177 as of April 1st in Bonita Springs, so there's obviously a growing desire within the city and within the county to see more solar in their local communities. Community-based solar programs are really designed to allow solar to be easily integrated into the urban landscape, where community members have the opportunity to see and learn about solar up close. Most of the time, solar is located out of sight, in a remote area, at a universal-scale solar center, or on a rooftop, so folks don't really have the opportunity to see and learn about it. So, our projects are really designed to raise awareness of solar energy and promote education about the benefits and applications of it. It would certainly highlight the city's sustainability and renewable energy initiatives, and promote any other investments, or complement any other investments, in renewable energy and efficiency. One of the products we offer, which I think is really neat, are our solar trees. There are two models of them. There's the curved design, which is the one on top. The curved design is about 18 feet tall, and it creates up to 120 square feet of shade. It also has the option of adding a USB charger onto it. So, we've seen these installed a lot at parks, children's playgrounds, things like that, so folks have the opportunity to charge their phones and also use it for shade. The one on the bottom is a little taller, it's up to 24 feet tall, and it creates up to 200 square feet of shade. That one doesn't have the option for the USB charger, but it does generate a bit more shade. I will say, in response to the gentleman's question, all of our structures are built to meet wind load ratings of 175 miles per hour. So, as hurricane-safe as they can be, right? But they come in three different colors, blue, green, or white. One of the other options we have through this program are our solar canopies. We use these for a variety of different applications. A lot, most of the time, we see them in parking lots. So, if you have a parking lot, and you don't have a lot of shade, it's a great way to add a little shade, so that when you park your car and you get into it, it's not as hot, which I know is not always fun, right? But we also have the ability to add them over tables, or just recently, the city of Punta Gorda, for instance, approved us installing a couple in their local parks, and one of them is over a chess table. Another one is over their interactive fountain, their splash pad. So, there's a lot of different ways we can use these structures within our local communities. These are just some examples of where they've been installed. The top picture is the Brevard Zoo in Melbourne. It's actually in their kangaroo exhibit, so the kangaroos interact with the solar trees, which I think is pretty cool. To the right is our FPL Manatee Lagoon Riviera Beach. Those are also the solar lifts. Below, on the left, is the West Palm Beach Zoo, example of our solar canopy. And then, recently, we've also installed some solar lifts at the Frost Science Museum in Miami. There is some entree branding associated with the program. We are, the program is regulated by the Florida Public Service Commission, so it's important that we recognize the customers contributing to that, so most of the branding really just highlights the program and the participants who are contributing to it. We offer a standalone sign with any of the products, either the solar tree or the canopies. Side A highlights the program participants, and the other side is offered to the city, and you can use that for whatever you see fit. It can be a calendar of events, it could be, you know, green initiatives the city's working on, that's really up to you, but you can take it out and change it as much as you like. We've worked with city staff on some initial ideas for places where they may be a good fit. One of them was the Bonita Springs Soccer Complex. I took a drive over there a few weeks ago and snapped a few shots, and just an idea was this section over here in the back, just because there was less landscaping, we don't like to remove landscaping if we don't have to, and so, that would be an example of what the canopy would look like in the parking lot, so providing shade, because there's not much there. This is another close-up picture of it. And then, another idea was the Bonita Springs Dog Park. There seemed like there were a lot of benches out there, a lot of green space, obviously, but not a lot of shade, so I thought these would be, the solar trees would be a great way of adding a little shade, and also raising awareness about solar energy at the same time. One of the options, too, with this model, the curved design is to add a bench around it. So, you'd either have the option of adding a standalone bench, which we would provide, or we can actually attach the bench onto the solar tree. So, with that, do you have any questions?
Great, wonderful.
Thank you.
Counsel, start down here. Fred, questions?
I think it's an opportunity, I think we ought to really look at the, seeing where we could use this in some of our parks, and all this vast land that the city owns and all that. One question I have, though, is what kind of wind load are these panels and devices designed for?
175 miles per hour.
Good.
Yeah. They're built to withstand the Florida weather.
Good. No, I really think we should really look into these areas that we have where we could do some extra things without spending money on the electric meters and all that that they have to put in.
Thank you, Fred. Mike?
Now, you said it's no cost to the city, and you guys maintain it, so I assume you guys get the electricity from it.
Well, because it's, the funding for it comes from FPL customers, all the energy is meant to go back to the grid, so that it benefits all customers.
So, that would be, oh, sorry.
But, well, we do have a lot of places that we would like to add shade structures to, and so, is there a way that the city could, you know, if we wanted to add a shade structure somewhere, could we, you know, chip in some money to get it done ahead of time, instead of having, you know, just the $9 from each individual customer?
Well, we already have funds allocated to use towards different structures in the community, so if there were additional sites that you wanted to do it, we could certainly look at those. I don't know about the city working with us separately to do other projects would probably be outside of this program, because generally, we just take the customer funds, and then we go to each city and community, and based on participation, you know, that's how we figure out how we're going to allocate how much.
Okay. Pete?
You might have said this, but offhand, how many people in Bonita Springs check off this extra money to give to FPL?
It was about 177, I think. I know those numbers keep increasing, so.
Okay, yeah.
And then, Lee County overall was over 1,000.
So, I think it's an interesting idea, the question I have is, to me, kind of an obvious So I think it's an interesting idea. The question I have is, to me, kind of an obvious one, which is it makes a big design statement. It's got a certain style to it.
It does.
And so I think whatever we do needs to be thought of in that regard. Now, the one you had was out in the soccer fields, right? Is that what you had?
Yeah, the Bonita Springs Soccer Complex.
So that's out in Marni Field?
Incorrect. Sorry. That would be the next adjacent to the YMCA.
To the Y, yeah.
Did I misname it?
No, no.
Okay.
They're both soccer complexes, yes.
And we actually do have one shade structure which has solar on it by rec center. You know, to me, out there, I think we have to understand what the design is from my perspective. But I mean, to me, that's a starter. But before we start, and appreciate, in my view, before we start plopping them all over the place for free shade, I think we need to understand what kind of a design statement it's making.
I totally understand that. And we do try with our latest model, we're working with a new vendor, to make them a lot more aesthetically pleasing to look at. I think if you see some of the older canopy-type structures, they do look a lot more industrial-looking. So these are meant to be a little bit more modern. But there are a couple of different options that we could look at if you wanted to see other designs.
Okay.
Great. Thank you. Thanks, Pete. Steve, sorry about that.
No, no, no. Peter asked one of my questions, but other than shade, what is the other benefit to the city?
Well, it's supposed to be an educational and awareness benefit, right? A community-based solar program is meant to raise awareness for city residents so they can see the different applications of solar power. I think it also makes a statement about the city supporting the residents who are currently contributing to the program, recognizing that contribution, because it's obviously important to them, because they're making that monthly contribution. And again, we cover all upfront costs. So, you know, you get the shade and the generation of the clean, emissions-free energy at no cost to the city.
Okay. And who provides the education for this?
Well, I think the structures themselves kind of lead folks to ask questions. And that's where some of the branding comes in. There's a text number that folks can use to text on their phones. And that leads them to a website that gives them more information about the program. And part of the signs as well. So that's why we try to install some branding, so, you know, people aren't just like, "Well, what is this?", you know? We want them to be aware of what they're contributing to and, you know, what it's doing for the environment.
Okay. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Steve. Greg?
Just a couple of questions real quick. The photos that you showed of the ones in the community already, they seem to be the bigger ones, the tree ones. But the ones that you showed us were the smaller ones. Is there a reason for that, or is just...
I thought I showed you both models.
No, in the presentation, there's only the three, the zoo, zoo, and the Riviera Beach.
Oh, the pictures of the installed ones?
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know why. Maybe I didn't have any photos off, there was no reason for it behind it.
I just didn't know if one was more popular than the other. That's all.
No, I actually think I've seen more of the smaller structures go in towards, like, parks and playgrounds and things like that.
Less industrial versus...
Right. And then the larger ones, I've seen more in front of city administration buildings and things like that. But I'll get, I could always follow up with some pictures of the installed ones.
I just wondered if there was a rhyme or reason, one was more popular or durable or something like that. That's all. My other question is, is on the curved ones with the benches and USB, if it's a cloudy day, is it still going to provide electricity for the USB? Or is there an onsite battery? Or how does that work with the USB? And how many can you have on each one?
There's no onsite battery for it. I believe that obviously it's going to work a little bit more when it's sunny out. I'd have to go back and check if, I mean, I think it always works to some degree. I don't know, I mean, I would assume it would have more power when it's sunny out. That I'll have to confirm. And as for the number of ports, I'll have to confirm that as well.
That's great. Thank you. Greg? Amy?
Well, one, a couple of questions. I agree that the aesthetic would be very important, because we're in the process of branding ourselves and we want urban designs in our parks and everything. So whether that fulfills that concept that we're going to develop over the next few months, I think is important. I have a question about some technology. How do you transmit the electricity from the solar to wherever? It must go back to Florida Power somehow. Do you have to put lines in, or what's the installation thing?
The trees are a little bit different than the canopies. The trees, we generally connect behind the meter. So we use the existing infrastructure at whatever site that they're installed. But there is no, we're, since we're regulated by the Florida Public Service Commission, we're not allowed to offer the power benefit to any one entity. So we would have to monitor how much energy was going to that building and still charge you for that energy, but we would charge you at your grid rate. So essentially, there is no more or less that you'd be paying when the structure was installed.
But Mike, but it, for example, in the soccer complex, where would you connect it?
It's underground.
So you'd have to put some kind of a line underground?
Well, generally, yeah. Yes. So we didn't, we, yes.
So what you're telling me is you get the nearest user and connect whatever we have there.
Right.
And then that user utilizes the energy that's produced. And if they don't have, if they don't use enough of it, then what do you do?
It's, for the trees, it's a small amount. It's usually 1.5 to 3 kilowatts. So you'd have to use very, 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 very little energy.
And frankly, I'd be more interested if we got a payback in our electric costs for these kinds of projects. I know that on a residential basis, there is, well, there's at least some tax benefit to installing solar collectors. And I know we must use a lot of electricity throughout the city. So there's, you know, I think that would be of more interest, well, additional interest. Though this is an interesting concept, particularly on the fields. I think that...
Yeah, and we can certainly have your customer account representative reach out to you. There are net metering agreements where if you do install rooftop solar, you do get the offset on your bill. Just because this program is funded by customer contributions, we're not allowed to offer that offset. But, you know, I'd be happy to have someone reach out to you to go over those options with you in more detail. And then just to finish answering your question, because it was two-part. As far as the canopies are concerned, generally, because they do produce a lot more energy than the trees, they're tied directly to the grid. So we would use existing infrastructure, a transformer that was already there, or we sometimes have to install an additional one next to it. But it's nothing too, you know, invasive or unattractive.
But on the soccer fields, we're talking about the ones that are in the FPL right-of-way, basically?
No, so these are by the YMCA?
Oh, it's not the one that's...
By the pickleball court.
Oh. How about along the, your right-of-way? That would make more sense to me.
We've actually...
Staff had asked them to look at that.
Yeah, and we are looking into it. It's going through a process internally to find out. But it's definitely an option that we're looking into.
And I understand that we've received some requests from the folks who do utilize that for some additional shade space there.
Right, great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, Greg?
I just had a follow-up question. I just thought of it. With the trees, you don't have to have the converter onsite to convert the DC to AC to put it back into the grid?
Well, it would be, yes. You'd have an inverter installed to convert it back, because it's always going to go DC to AC.
Okay.
Yeah.
But on the larger, like the canopies, there may be an additional for the arrays?
Yeah, that would be installed. But it's a small, just a small box.
And it'd be in the same place where the transformer is?
Yeah.
Not near that area?
No. It'd be right, it would stay right near the electrical infrastructure.
I was going to thank you, Counsel. And I think most of my questions have been answered in one form or another. And in terms of the options, I guess, you know, there's certainly some. We talked about where the power goes, where the rate go, you know, where the generated power goes, who goes what, where the split is. That was, I think, obviously, we need to flush that a little bit more in some more detail. But with the designs, and I know we touched on this, are there, I don't know, I'm not going to say, like, palm trees or something a little more aesthetically pleasing?
Not as far as the solar trees are concerned. But if you didn't like the look of the solar trees, and listen, everybody, you know, it's a subjective thing. You either like them or you don't.
Right.
But we could certainly look at doing more smaller canopies in terms of shading structures instead of the trees. That's what we did in the city of Punta Gorda. They prefer the canopies to the solar trees.
Right, right. Okay. I mean, so it's, I mean, it sounds like there's definitely room for discussion there, which I understand, but I just wanted to thank you for that, because sometimes these things are, "Well, we haven't quite done that" or "We haven't thought about that." And obviously, I think you've thought about a lot of these things. In terms of, just kind of give us a sense, and I'm not trying to put you on the spot. How much would, let's just say, actually, maybe go back so we could look at it. Would that make sense?
How much would the dog park thing cost?
Right, right. Yeah, yeah. I guess, sure, that's fine. What would something like that produce, I guess, annually, monthly, or quarterly? Or how do you, how do you look at it?
So each tree, capacity-wise, the curves generate less than the lifts, which were the bigger ones. These are generally about 1.5 to 2 kilowatts. And the lifts are 2 to 3 kilowatts. And you could, we use the equivalent of, one of these are enough to power a electrical vehicle for 15,000 miles per year. I could certainly...
And that's how often, I apologize? A monthly? A year? A year? I'm sorry. I missed that. Thank you.
And if you, if we did work on a proposal and you decided you wanted to move forward, I could certainly quantify that for you in terms that, you know, in terms of how much a local building in the city uses.
Yeah, well, what would a house use?
Right. Well, these are kind of hard to compare, because they don't produce that much.
That's what I'm saying. Would a house use how many kilowatts on ballpark?
For the trees?
No, no. Just how much?
Normal house.
What's a house use a year, the average house?
Well, the average bill, I think, is based on 1,000 kilowatts per month. So...
And this produces...
1.5 to 3.
A month or...
No, a year. I know, I'm sorry. A year, right?
Yeah, it's hard to quantify like that. It doesn't, it's an equation where you'd have to quantify kilowatt-hours, whereas this is just the kilowatt capacity. But like I said, if we came up with a proposal, I could certainly quantify it in numbers that make more sense.
Great.
And the other side is, this doesn't cost us anything, but we don't reap any benefits either. We don't save money, because they're paying for the whole thing. So...
Right, right, right. Anything else, Counsel?
Not to throw a monkey wrench in it, but I mean, I think FPL is committed, or they're required, to have a certain amount of solar energy in their fuel mix. So this helps you, too. That's why you're doing it. And then your ratepayers are basically paying for it.
Well, we, I think it's important to us that we don't create a cross-subsidy for any of our customers. So this is an option for people who want solar and maybe can't put it on their roof, because they live in an apartment or they don't like the aesthetics of it, but want to see more solar in their communities. But it doesn't create a cross-subsidy for the customers who don't want to do it. So...
Well, okay.
Yeah.
Counsel, Steve, yes?
Just a quick question. What is that going to cost, say, the one in the dog park, just that one? What is that going to cost FPL?
It varies depending on installation costs and labor costs. The structures themselves are anywhere between 20,000 to 30,000, I believe. And then there's labor costs and installation costs. And, you know, that varies on how many we do and in what location it is.
Thank you. Great. Greg?
Just lastly, if we were to do something like this, do we have to sign like a, how long of a long-term contract are we talking?
There is a legal agreement. Generally, the trees are a 10-year lease agreement. And then the canopies are 15 to 20.
Okay.
So you'd have to choose a space where you felt like it could stay there for a while.
Gotcha.
Counsel, anything else? Fred?
One curious question. Do you have to renew the cells every so many years to keep them running at good efficiency?
No, they're meant to be able to last for the duration of the time that they're installed. But, you know, if there was ever an issue, a maintenance issue, you'd be assigned a designated customer service representative for these and they'd come out and they'd fix them immediately.
Okay. Great. We're done with our serious discussion. Me, I'll just throw this. So if Michael J. Fox and Doc come into town and need some power for their flux capacitor to get back to the future, will one of these handle that?
I don't know about that, right? I don't like to make any promises.
That's what gigawatts, right? That's gigawatts. Wonderful. Anything else you want to add, or...
No, you know, I think we're, we think it's an exciting program. We'd love to get your thoughts. If you have locations that you'd, you know, like to see a proposal for, we'd be happy to put together some renderings.
Great. Wonderful. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks for being with us this morning. Okay, we're going to move on to our next presentation is with Kate Pagan on bald eagle protection at River Park. Good morning.
Good morning, Kate.
How are you?
Good. How are you?
Wonderful.
I'll introduce myself. I'm Kate Pagan, homeowner at 27467 Pullen Avenue. I'm a former science teacher for Lee County, a biologist for CGT Kayaks, and a wildlife researcher for federal and state projects. And today, I'm here to talk to you about protection of the bald eagles at River Park. So without further ado, if you have not seen these birds before, this is our most current family from 2017. This family, there were two chicks that successfully fledged this year. The photos were taken in April and shortly thereafter, about a week later, the eagles had already migrated north. So I was just able to capture them before they left for the summer. Prior to this, I've heard from other bird watchers that last year, three chicks successfully fledged, which is basically the highest, the highest normal rate. And then the year before that was two. So over three years, we've had seven chicks fledge from this nest. And if you're familiar at all with other popular bald eagles, such as the family up in North Fort Myers that are on that webcam, they've had some pretty bad luck over the last few years, and I think maybe only three over three years. So we're really fortunate to have this breeding pair come to River Park every year. So some people don't know very much about bald eagles, but they do nest and live near water sources. It's not their primary source of food, but it's pretty, it's pretty substantial for them. The breeding pairs do mate for life. If there is a casualty with one of the mates, they will find another. And some of you may also be familiar with the pair in Fort Myers. Harriet lost Ozzy and she has found a new mate. And so people are watching that to see what happens there. They return to their breeding grounds within 100 miles of where they're raised. So Southwest Florida eagles are Southwest Florida eagles. And all the chicks that come from here are going to come back to our region in a few years and start their own families. So it's really important that we, you know, we support and protect the eagles that we have here. One to three eggs per year. So again, three, you know, that's the top. Usually, they only have about two. So we're lucky for that. In an incubation of only 35 days, by three months, the chicks have successfully fledged, which means they've, are able to fly and leave the nest. But they'll continue to sort of rely on their parents for another month or so before they leave. All the research suggests that the chicks will just continue to harass their parents until the parents just can't take it anymore. And at that point, they stop feeding their chicks. And the chicks are required to take care of themselves and fly away. So that's usually by April. And in our area, April is that time that they typically leave. And then they do fly off to better feeding grounds. We should expect to see our eagles return sometime in September. Definitely by October, they should be back and scouting out the area and rebuilding the nest if they need to. Many of you might know or not know that the bald eagle is not considered an endangered species anymore. We had a lot of protections following the die-off from the 50s with the DDT. And so now, the protections that are in place are the migratory bird treaty act. And that's, that particular act is more for, you can see that, taking, killing, possession, transportation. So basically, most birds fall under the migratory bird protection act and we don't harass any of those birds. The eagles are given a little bit more protection with the Bald and Golden Eagle Protection Act. And this goes in one step further to, that, if we do anything to a nest while they're gone, if it adversely impacts their behavior when they return, then we're at fault, or somebody's at fault for that. So whatever's done during the off-season needs to still keep the environment around their nest at sort of status quo. And then in Florida, they go one step a little bit further. On public land, it's unlawful for any person to knowingly enter an area where there is posted signage. And that's important, because people may or may not know, and a lot of people like to get up close and personal. But if there's signage in an area and a person knowingly crosses that signage, that they are now violating state law. The guidelines that the federal government has set up, this is Fish and Wildlife Service, we have two glaringly obvious categories that we fall under. So category F is for recreation and human entry. That's, you know, canoe kayak, bird watchers, anybody who's walking around, goes to the park, wants to see the bald eagles. And they suggest a 330-foot buffer around the nest to give the eagles the protection that they need. Eagles will hear noises, but they're more disturbed by visual cues. So the 330-foot gives them sort of the distance, you know, they may not, they wouldn't be able to see us through the trees at 330 feet. You know, they're not watching. So that's a pretty important distinction to be made. And another one could be category G for helicopters and fixed wing. We don't have any planes, I'm sure, that fly around 1,000 feet here. But we do have the potential to have drones in the area below 1,000 feet. And that would just be a significant harassment to an eagle. to an eagle. Actually, have, there were some news stories of eagles taking down drones. So we don't, we would probably like to consider closing the park off to drones during nesting season. These are also, I'd like this to be known, that they're not law. These are just guidelines that Fish and Wildlife Service has come up with. And it's over decades of observations of people and animals and anything else coming into a close area with eagles and, and the response that's happened. So again, it's not law, it's recommendation, but they do strongly encourage adherence to these recommendations. So this matters to us. Obviously, we have a nesting pair. There's several nesting pairs throughout Benita Springs, but most are on, on private land. But we do have the, the parent in Riverside Park. I took this from the property appraiser's website. So River Park is that top area that's all green, and then the bottom part with that little bit that sticks down, and then everything else under here and around here, and even this narrow strip are privately owned. The, I went out to the nest. This is an approximate location. Currently, on Florida Fish and Wildlife's website, they, the coordinates that they give for the nest seem to be off. And they might, that, those coordinates might actually put the nest in private, that strip right here, that private land. But from my own observations, I would say the nest is more closely located to the parking lot and on Benita Springs' property. This is the 330-foot buffer around this. This is just my, my workings. This is not an actual, like GIS map with a GPS or anything, so this is not maybe to scale, but this is the best that I could come up with. So you can see how, you know, the nest location would be somewhere in the middle, and the 330-foot buffer would get us right up sort of toward the parking area. And then for further discussion at some point in the future, there is, I guess, because the, that, that private land would probably be looked to be developed at some point, and it, the, the buffers would overlap into that development area. Something that I noticed when I was out there, when I, for the first time, when I'd seen these eagles, is that from the park, you have, as you're walking along here, it's, there's a couple areas of access into the woods where it's highly trafficked. And if you're just in the area, you can see that you can walk down into the woods. And if you kept walking through these areas, you'd, you'd get up to this berm here, and it takes you right to the eagle nest, which is, I think, right over here. And so it's, it's basically just like, people, if they start on this trail, they're going right to the eagle nest, which would be against the federal guidelines. This is a picture I took that day in April, where you can see the, the trail's pretty densely packed down. You could see tire ruts, so definitely evidence of vehicles going back there as well. And so a suggestion would be, yeah, just to easily just put up some signs, some placards, saying you can no longer go through here during nesting season. But also would be to, to restore the area to more of a natural state, because the way that the park is, there, there's not really much area for trails. And it doesn't, I don't think any of the trails are actually designated to be hiking trails, so it's really just inviting people to the berm, which either looks at private property or the bald eagle nest. So I, giving this some thought, have come up with some suggestions. And one would be to, to create a, a bird observation tower with some sort of visual blind, so that the birds can't see the people. And then also, obviously, would be information placards to, you know, tell people how great our bald eagles are. I think everybody loves our national bird. And then probably, you know, the easiest upfront would just be to have signage. You know, we could come up with maybe a tower over the next couple of years, look for some money, but the signage is just, you know, some things that could go around to just inform people that they can no longer cross into that area. And then also, because River Park does have a couple of great docks, would, to utilize that, maybe to put up a sign to encourage boaters and kayakers to tie up for a few minutes and walk up to the park and, and see the birds. So it's kind of, it's an additional benefit for the visitors. Being a teacher, I always look for the educational impact. And with, between the, the middle school, the middle school, sorry, the elementary schools, the middle school and the high school, there could be some good research partnerships there. And, you know, local nonprofits, non-government organizations. And then, and then opportunity for community outreach. The eagles in Fort Myers have names. People follow them regularly on the website. They have had 112 million viewers to that webcam. And so I'm pretty sure that people, even in town here, would love to, to have an opportunity to name our, our bald eagles, and get to know them, and watch, and, and see what happens year after year with their chicks. Citizen Science, I think, is a really great thing. There's, we could have potentially, it's going to come up here, a partnership with the Audubon Society. They are already collecting a little bit of data on this nesting pair. But this, this data can be used to come back to, say, Benita Springs, or to the utility company, or the developers, to, you know, understand the, the data that's being collected, the, what's happening with the behavior of the birds, and if we are doing anything, or anybody else is doing anything, to change that behavior. And then, you know, again, outreach to, to the kids in our community. It's so easily accessible to go and see these birds, that they, they should go and do that, perhaps, and, and do some science. Get back to the suggestions. And then there's, there's a lot of different opportunities that come along with people who are more closely watching the eagles. You know, when are they going to arrive? When are they going to lay the eggs? When do the eggs hatch? How many chicks are there going to be? And so there's a lot of different opportunities to, to keep people going through the entire eagle season. And that overlaps wonderfully with our school year and with our tourism. About 2 million people are known to come to Florida specifically for bird watching opportunities, so this is just another thing to add to the list for those people to come and spend time in our community and see the birds that we have here. This is an example of just two signs that I was able to pull off of the internet. I've seen them. There's a, a park, Estero Rivers, I think it's, I don't think, might be a state, not state park, but the Estero River community, they do also have a bald eagle nest, and they have big signs that, you know, tell you do not encroach on the area. And these next three pictures are just different options for bird viewing. So this one is just a little bit raised. It gives shade, some benches, a little bit of a screen. Here, this wouldn't be high enough for bald eagle nests, but you can see how it kind of creates a blind, and there's information placards within the blinds, and you've got lower areas for children, higher areas for adults, or, you know, people, if you're familiar with bird watching, there's often spotting scopes and binoculars. And then this last one, a little bit, this is actually, I think, in Finland, but looks a little bit like Florida with the pine trees, and you get the elevation. So something like this would get, you know, viewers up into the trees a little bit higher. But perhaps with the addition of a blind, you know, they could see the eagles pretty clearly without the eagle seeing them. So a good opportunity. And the only research I've done so far, and I'm sure that there are more opportunities, but the American Eagle Foundation has grant projects, or grant opportunities every single year. And this year, the total that they're going to be giving out is $100,000. And they do rank their, the, the grant awards based on how many needs, or how many different projects, or how many different sort of qualifications that the, the project meets. So the more things that we could do to tie into this, the more likely we are to get more money from something like that, or to be awarded. And so if this is something that the city would like to go forward, the deadline for the grant money for 2018 is in just a couple months.
Wonderful.
Any questions?
Thank you very much. Thank you for that presentation. Counsel? Fred?
Real quick question. On, like, these observation decks or towers to get up, don't, won't, wouldn't they have to be ADA compliant, because you have to give them an opportunity too?
Sure. That, I don't know. I'm, this is, this is just something that I'm presenting, so we would have to do more research on that. But I have been to numerous places, even up, is it Ding Darling? I know that they have bird, dirt, bird platforms, so there are ways to accommodate the needs of all types of visitors.
Kate, so great job. So I only, I have two views about one point, which is, it'd be great to activate River Park. It would be great to have people watching the eagles. But there, and I see, I'm interested that it is done in other places. But there's always been sensitivity about telling a lot of people about this nest being there. And the proof is that path you had. So, I mean, I, it's kind of like, it's good, but it also has that issue associated with it, in my view.
I've also thought about that.
Okay.
The more people who know about it-
It'd be traipsing up, traipsing up to the-
But if, if there's signage-
Well-
So then they're, they're violating law.
Right.
So that would be one. But the more people who are there, the less violators you have, sometimes.
Well, it's, it's an issue, is all I'm saying.
I agree.
Great. Yes, Steve?
There was a, we have a lot of drones nowadays, and we also have a lot of people that have recreational aircraft. And they, that, you build themselves, or have somebody else build it for them. And you say you have to be 1,000 feet away from the nest?
Uh, for aircraft.
How is that communicated to the individual flying?
I don't know. That's something I haven't considered yet.
And once again, you tell them they'll be there.
But, well, drone operators are supposed to be aware of their ability to not fly to certain altitudes, so they should know. There are regulations in place for, say, I, some of the research I do is for large whales, and there are federal guidelines that drones cannot be within 5,000, or 1,000 feet from particular whale species. You, you, you have to hope that the people who are operating the drones already have that awareness regarding the situation.
Well, in terms of the fixed, I'm just wondering how, how do they know where they are?
The-
The pilot.
Uh, well, they typically wouldn't. So we, that's something that we wouldn't, wouldn't necessarily be able to, to concern ourselves with. Maybe the, the mosquito aircraft. But I don't think that that's, more of my concern would be with just recreation visitors showing up to the park with drones, because they can't get close to the nest, so they're going to send their drone in to take a, take a shot.
Nicole, did you have something you wanted to add?
Yes, I did. Nicole Perrino, Parks and Recreation Director. I did want to add, we already ban drones in this park due, for the bald eagle's nest. So that is something that the city already has in place in our park ordinance. We can add additional signage, but we have any violators that we have seen, we have had a couple of people, park staff does let them know, you know, they cannot fly drones in this area due to the sensitivity of the eagle's nest. Something else we can do, we also have been under the impression that the nest is not on city property, but that is something we can take a look at again. It, it has always been on private, the private portion, but that is something we can do. And in terms of the trails, they, they're not trails. They are just kind of man-made areas. So that is something we could, if, if you prefer, put additional signage, not allowing, because a lot of that is mangroves and things that people shouldn't be walking through, regardless of the eagles. So that's something we can put up signage more of saying, this isn't a trail.
I would, I want to just block it off.
Yeah.
I was just going to say, those darn eagles, they don't know the difference between public and private trees?
Yes, I know, right?
My goodness.
They can't figure that out.
Just for counsel's knowledge, when we, when the city created River Park, it received additional permitting for additional phases that were never done, including the blind tower, was something that is in the existing federal and state permits that the city has for that park facility. So if it does become something counsel wants, it is something that has, there's already been some work on that.
Right, okay. Greg?
Did you have some? Yeah, just real quick. When you're talking about grant funding, are we talking matching grants or full grants?
Um, I had, I don't know the exact amount, or how that exactly works. There's, the simple research of looking into grants takes you directly to this.
Bless you.
And I think it's just, I think it's just a grant.
Okay.
Amy?
I just want to thank you for the presentation, but I too have concerns about exposing people like me who didn't even know we had an eagle's nest there, to, I immediately said, oh, I have to go look at it, you know? So I think that's a normal reaction. So I think we do need to protect the eagle's nest from, from interested parties. But I am fascinated by the idea of having a webcam, so I would, I would like to pursue that. And finally, I just have a question. Is there a line of sight from our property to this, to this nest? I mean, do you have to go along that berm to get to sight? I don't-
No, if you, just driving in, so the road runs, looks like north-south. If you're just driving towards the park entrance, you can see the nest from there. The, the property in front is pretty cleared from prior residential area.
So we could set up some viewing station along the drive?
And that would be well beyond.
That would be ideal.
And most, most birders, when they're really looking, they, they keep a distance too, because they don't want to disturb. So there's always, people have spotting scope and binoculars, and if you have any sort of, you know, visual aid, you can get a really good sight.
But I would encourage Nicole to explore this, so we could come back and see how practical these things. But with the idea that we want to, you know, protect the, the birds, I'm in favor of signage. And if we could pursue the webcam, I think that's kind of fun. And there are lots of partners that I think might be interested in that, so I'm on board.
We have actually pursued the webcam before. One issue we've come up with is the park does not have electricity. We don't have lines that go to the park. So-
For one day.
Yeah. We did look at cost at adding-
Gigawatts.
Yeah. We did look at cost at adding, I mean, and we were at upper, upwards of $60,000 to $75,000 just to add the electric. That's not adding the cameras. When it wasn't on our property, that's also something that we couldn't do. From the park itself, there really isn't a line of sight to the nest. It's actually in the road, so people park along the road. So that's not part of the park. So, and in the cleared area, that's private property. So we, we have explored this in the past. Previous councils have asked us to look at this, so we have done some research.
Right, so we need more work.
But we didn't really get anywhere with the cost of adding electric to the, to the park and things like that, that it was going to be pretty costly to do. But that's something we can definitely explore and look into again, if that's something you're interested in.
Right, and we can go with some low-cost things, right? Signs are not that expensive.
Signage is easy.
And closing up the, the impromptu trails.
Yep, yep, those we can definitely do.
Good, thank you.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Is there signage right now for the drones, or saying that there's not allowed to be drones?
We don't have signage currently, saying drone, that drones aren't allowed in the park, but that is something that we are looking into, because the, we do keep having changes through the FAA on, on drones and how they work. So we were kind of waiting on a definitive answer. We do have to send our ordinance to the FAA currently, showing that we do ban it. So we were kind of on a little bit of a holding pattern, but I think that that's pretty finalized now, so we should be able to, to add all the appropriate signage.
And I just have a question. Regarding the webcam, you, you say the, the eagles will leave, they'll, they'll, in the, in the springtime, they'll go, but they'll come back, maybe not the exact same eagles, but will another set of eagles come to the same nest? You said kind of within 10 miles, or do usually they come back to the exact same nest?
Usually, it's the same pair that come back to the nest year after year.
The only reason I'm asking is, so the webcam, in theory, if we, if, goes up when they're gone, when they come back, they see a webcam, are they, is it going to be, oh no, this nest has been disturbed, and move on?
That doesn't seem to be the case.
That won't be-
Yes, North Fort Myers, they've been through this, and during the off-season, they do their repairs, and they move stuff around, and-
Right.
The eagles don't seem to care.
Okay, very good. No, that's great. I mean, that's good news. And I don't know, webcam, with, with this day and age and technology, maybe there's something else that wouldn't require electricity, but I don't, I don't know.
That's a good point, yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't know.
And maybe make or reach out to the, the Realtor who, who's put up the webcams in Fort Myers.
Right.
It's been wildly successful.
Like these kids do all the time these days.
Yeah, they'll sit at the park on their phone.
Let's bring in some 10-year-olds, and they'll tell us how we can do it, right? Wonderful. Counsel, anything else?
Just, could you leave your contact information with the city, so we can, if, because if we have any follow-up stuff for you?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Wonderful, thank you, Kate. And we're, council, unless there's any objections, we're going to move up Carol Green's presentation for legislative priorities before community development, if that's okay?
Yep.
Any objections, counsel?
Yes.
Okay, Carol Green. Good morning.
Good morning. Good to be with you all again.
Hello.
And appreciated having an opportunity to share a little dialogue with you in your last meeting a couple weeks ago. But unfortunately, or fortunately, however you want to look at it, we are headed back to Tallahassee the week after Labor Day for our upcoming next session. As, as the senator spoke earlier today, when I was here a couple weeks ago, we talked a little bit about the past session, but one of our main goals at that time was to start planting the seed of, it's time to start thinking about the, the go-forward, because of the fact that it's coming up so quickly. And I'm here today to, to have that dialogue with you. I, I was just actually looking at a website that's produced by the American Legislative Council Exchange, Exchange Council, excuse me, I changed those words around. I do want to share with you that just recently, as I was speaking with other like-minded folks regarding home rule, that we do know that, that part of the impetus for all of the home rule legislation that we've seen, fortunately, most of it didn't pass, but that that did, did not pass will come back. They're not going to walk away from it. And we do know that the Legislative Exchange Council is sharing information about that across the whole nation. So we know a lot of legislators are going- So we know a lot of legislators are going to those meetings. In fact, they just got back from that one just a week or so ago. A lot of the, uh, information they're receiving is about, uh, home rule and about taking charge. And so we expect that that will be back. And I do want to, I, I, I know how you stand on that, having had this relationship with you all for a very long time. But I do want to mention that. Uh, I know that, uh, that Senator Latvala, who was here visiting with some of us a, a couple of weeks ago or so, made it clearly known that, that he is not in favor of the home rule attack that we're seeing. I don't think that the Senate is for the most part as a body. Individually, maybe some of them are, but as a body, we've been able to fight off a lot of it because of the fact that the senators, like Senator Latvala, Senator Pasadoma, who represents us well, have all been fighting against that. Unfortunately, we're not seeing exactly the same thing, um, in the House. The Speaker of the House is very, uh, committed to continuing to erode home rule if in fact he, uh, can make that happen. He, he's been very vocal about the fact that he thinks that some changes still need to be made. So I did want to share that with you in starting our conversation. Last, um, the last meeting when I was here a couple of weeks ago, uh, we did, um, start it by looking back at what, what was on the priority list from last year. And it seems that there were a lot of things on that priority list that really probably haven't changed a great deal. The, uh, one of the other things we spoke to, Senator Pasadoma and Senator Latvala. Senator Latvala, of course, is our Senate Appropriations Chair. One of the things we did speak to him about specifically was the quadrant plan. He also visited that, that intersection, so he had a visual too of what we were doing. So having had him do that, um, and, and Mayor, it was really kind of you to, uh, put together a little, uh, meet and greet for him down here so that he really did have that opportunity to see the, the lay of the land, if you will, and have an opportunity to have even more dialogue than we'd had, uh, earlier in the day. So I know that the commitment that he had there and certainly the commitment that the Senator shared with you just a few minutes ago, um, i- is there. And we will continue to do that and continue to push forward on it. Obviously, we will want to meet again with Representative Rodriguez and the delegation whenever the delegation meeting happens. With that being said, um, I'm here today to hear from you, um, kind of your priorities. And then I know you'll be working to, to prioritize your priorities, if you will. But hear from you individually about those things that you're very concerned about. So we make sure that we carry the, the right message to Tallahassee on your behalf.
Right, great. Thank you Carol very much. Arlene?
Yes, Mayor, and if you, council, if you recall, um, at the July 5th meeting, um, we asked to defer this to this meeting so that we could have the full council present for this discussion.
Yes, no, absolutely. Fred, why don't we start with you?
Well, one's a question, the other is two thoughts.
Yes, sir.
Like, for example, the, uh, getting gaming at the racetrack, that's not an active thing. That's something that if a bill pops up, then you, you put some resources to backing that position. Is that right?
Absolutely, and, and Senator Galvano, who we had an opportunity to meet with briefly when we were, um, doing our day on the hill, day on the hill, if you will, last year, would be the point person in that regard. And if and when we see any negotiations happen, then we always just weigh in with the fact that it's important. What I do with that actually, uh, on a fairly regular basis is I have contact with the Haverak family so that if they see something that's going on, they let me know. And then I let everyone here know what's going on. I let Carl know. So that's how we've been handling that, um, to make sure that they understand that that piece of property, which is about a hundred acres, as I recall, is, is right here in the heart of our city. So, uh, that's how we handle it, yes.
Now, I, I, I would like to support what Martha Simas proposed, which is that we add, uh, you know, our opposition.
Just a little bit in the mic, sorry Fred.
Our opposition, add opposition to fracking.
Yes, sir.
But that's just, I mean, I, we'll make sure the rest of council feels comfortable with that.
Is it not in there? I'm looking for my sheet.
We have had it there, um, as a priority for a number of years to, to oppose fracking. Last year, we didn't have any opportunity really to have much action on it, but in past year, okay. In past years, we have had. Uh, we've been fighting it up till the end. Yes, sir.
May I just interject on that point? Because, uh, it was my understanding that some of the opposition we had to some of the bills that were being proposed on fracking was that they were, um, overruling our own fracking prohibition or there's certain nuances in a statewide fracking, uh, ordinance that would limit or adjust it in, in the detail that we would not be happy with. So I would support maintaining our home rule issue here because I think we're all against fracking, but we want to do it our way and we don't want any nuance where there could be an, an, an aspect of the fracking that, that the state would, uh, overrule what we have. So that's the point that I would like, rather than, I'm not in favor of statewide fracking ban. Not because I don't, I approve of fracking, but because I think we've done a better job here.
And I think that falls back to, to our foundation of home rule.
If everybody disagrees with me, but that's, that's the part where I'm not in favor of it.
Back, back to home rule, which I think.
Right.
Home rule kind of aces everything out whenever you come down to the basis of it. You know, home rule is a foundation that we're never going to waver from.
Correct.
Right, okay, great. Fred, did you have anything else?
No, I, I, I think we're doing, I think some things like fracking needs to be statewide, but without the details being taken away for us to add to it. But I do, there's some, because you can frac, uh, ten miles up the road outside of Benita and still mess us up and we have no control over that.
Understood.
Yep.
Carol, I had two things.
Yes, sir.
One is this FDOT angle because, uh, Senator Latvala brought it up and, uh, Kathie, Senator Pasadoma brought it up. So I'm not saying this would have made a difference last year, but, uh, on the quadrant plan, we have, this had the support of Billy Haddaway when he was in charge of FDOT District One. And we have L.K.'s support today. Who is the new head, as you know, of District One, FDOT. So when I, when I heard from both senators, it wasn't in their five-year work plan, I'm saying to myself, somewhere there's a slip between a cup and a lip here.
Sure, understood.
All right, so in other words, if there's something we're supposed to be doing to show that, we need to know that.
Yes, sir. And, and it's on my list and Carl and I have already spoken about that too.
And anything more we should be doing.
Right. And, and there was, there, there was a little bit of a breakdown in communication at one point because of the fact that what had happened was, there was a previous plan in place.
Right.
As far as what was going to happen, which I think included the controversial flyover and those types of things. And what happened was.
It was an intersection study, not a flyover.
No, I'm, but I mean, I'm just.
But I'm just, I'm saying that the state, the state contacted, yeah.
It proves the point that that was well underway.
Right, and, and the state then had a lot of hiccups, wondering why we were asking for monies this year on something that they thought had been done away with a couple of years previously. So I was on the phone with them, Senator Pasadoma. So there was, there was a little bit of a hiccup there this year, but we're aware of that and dealt with it.
Right, and I, and probably we ought to be getting better information to you and to whomever is, no, whomever is involved. Because, to be clear, that was not an intersection study. It was not a study of many options, of which one of them was the flyover. There's a clear trail of ten-year documentation at the MPO and in the city of Benita Springs that that project was an overpass. And, um, you know, I've explained this to the county commission as an example. I've explained this to one of our county commissioners and he said, boy, Peter, thank you for telling me that. And he actually said, I apologize because I thought it was an intersection study and one of the options happened to be. But months later, it's just the way people get hardwired. He was talking about it as an intersection study. There's nothing, he didn't mean anything by it. There was such a, um, a batch of what I would call propaganda put out that this is just an intersection study, that many, many people really think that. And so we need to get you, if, if that's percolating even up through FDOT, we need to get you, cause it's not, it's not your responsibility, it's ours. We need to get to you the actual, so people, no, no, that's not what it was.
And I, and I, and councilman, I can tell you that I personally got on the phone with them during session last year because of the fact that it percolated through the question, it was a questioning of the appropriations staff.
Right.
And they had given the question to the Senator and the Senator handed that off to me. And I handled it personally.
Yeah.
Through the information from Carl. And I know that Carl and I have had this since Senator Latvala was here and we kind of went through everything with him. It, it has, it has risen to the point of where we will be prepared to do a much better job.
I'm not criticizing the job, I'm just saying.
No, but, no, but it's important to know because those things do happen.
Right.
You know, it, it becomes reality. You hear it often enough.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And no one knows it better than Fred. I mean, when we were both off council. So, uh, the second thing I had is actually on this Senate Bill thirteen twelve, which is what some people are calling the sign bill on the gas stations, but.
The preempt, yes.
Yeah, but it's.
Preemption bill.
Right, but on the face of it, it's much more than that.
Mm-hmm.
On the face of it, it says that no local jurisdiction can have any restriction on design schemes, image standards, or other features of corporate branding identity. And I know, uh, because we were down there yesterday, that people in the city of Naples government have worked up about this. I know Estero's worked up about it, uh, for good reason. So, I don't think that's a minor, not, not your fault.
No, but, no, but I, and I just received all, yeah, I received the information just this morning. Arlene had sent, or, or last night, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Anyway, I have all of the information. I have the email chain of all of the comments too. So that's always good to have.
So on the face of that, that could have somebody literally going on old forty-one, we've done all this work and putting up, blowing through our entire color scheme.
Right.
And so I was actually going to raise later here that this council send a letter together with Estero and if Naples wanted to as well collectively to our legislative delegation about that. So I don't want to slow us down here, but that's for later.
Got it.
Great. Thanks, Pete. Steve?
I had the same concerns that Fred did about the gaming and the fracking. But, uh, Mayor, my memory serves right, didn't we as a body, you sign a letter to Tallahassee that we were opposed as a city to fracking?
To the fracking, yes. I mean, I guess, and I'm happy to do it annually or quarterly or whatever we need to do. Well, no, because let's face it, some of the.
Right.
Player, I'm, the players, the elected officials change, right, um, up there. So I'm happy to, if somebody's term limited out or we need to, you know, and, and maybe that's a minor point, but an important point, that we send them annually or each legislative session or special session, Carol.
Right.
Look for your guidance there, whatever's best.
I think that what, what we find to be best is that we need to keep things as, as pertinent as possible. And of course, as you know, um, between, Ashley is the one who really monitors all of the bills. She monitors every bill that's filed. And what we would propose to do is, once we see anything filed that has that subject matter in it, that that would be the time to send a letter. I think sending a letter right now, today, when nothing's filed, isn't probably going to have the same weight as something, once we see something that pops, we would immediately, you know, send that over to, you know, to Carl and Arlene and say, hey, by the way, we've got a bill filed now, so now's a good time to get the letter out.
Right.
And who to send it to.
Right, we could obviously send a hard copy, but then it would also be a good time for our citizens and residents to weigh in, maybe electronically via email or whatever form of communication works best for them.
That would be more timely to do that.
Great.
And, and frankly, y'all have, your plates are very full. So, you know, if we can keep everything to things that are really meaningful as opposed to the periphery that may not actually come to fruition, you know, we'll, we'll be mindful of that too.
Right, right, right. Fred, I see you got your hand up, but I'm going to continue this way and then I'll come back to you. Uh, Steve, do you have something else?
No, no, no.
Okay, great. Greg?
No, I was just saying, uh, the eight that we had on there last year, I think everything's still a priority except for the last one, which was the state funding for the Lover's Key State Park.
Which has been secured.
Which has been secured, so.
Yes, sir.
But thank you for everything you've done.
Thanks, you appreciate it.
Thank you. Amy?
I just want to mention, because I was alerted to the signed comments from Senator Pasadoma. And I too feel that because we're investing so much time in our branding, so to speak, and we have a whole sign, uh, design process going, that, uh, that, uh, legislation doesn't sound like anything that we would like to have continued, even though it was just passed, this past legislation.
It may be have a glitch, I mean, obviously there'll be a glitch bill, but yes.
Yeah, I think that creates a lot of problems for us. And then I just want to emphasize number two, because I do think that, uh, we have a commitment as a city to protect our DRGR and the water resources there.
Absolutely.
So anything that would, I mean, a really substantive sign on to providing, the helping communities provide funds so that we can make acquisitions there, uh, would be very helpful. So that's, that's a priority for me and plus everything else.
Yes, ma'am.
And thank you for all you do. I appreciate it.
By all means, thank you.
Thank you. Fred?
Yes, sir.
The only thing I was going to say, uh, on this signage bill, and that is, sometimes, um, the other big interest, big business interest will get the best of you. So we need to have a fallback position, which is if that's going to go through.
It's gone through.
That sign, size and branding and all that can be of a certain size. It can't be huge.
It's already passed, it's signed.
Well, then we need, we need to be going on it to.
It's been signed, but I, but the, the one thing that I do predict will happen is that there will be some means of readdressing that this year. I, I mean, I, I don't really have a crystal ball. I tease that I do once in a while, but I don't really. But, but if I did, it would tell me that there's been enough of, and, um, an uproar about this, that people, that the legislators are hearing about it enough that they will probably want to go back and, um, the words tweak, tweak it just so that it, it's not, makes it a little more palatable, if you will. That'd be my prediction, because you've got people like Senator Pasadoma bringing it up today too. And then you've got people that are starting to talk about it. And, and I would think that the league and, and, um, and the counties would be talking about it too, as they do their platforms.
So the word going around on that, kind of the buzz has been, it's only about size. It's not correct.
Yeah, yeah, you always have to peel the onion.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, the, the words of that statute mention gasoline station size. The words of that first section don't even mention size. It talks about any, anything that connotes a corporate branding.
Yep.
Right. And I would just like to add, is there any, I think I know the answer, but I'll, but I'll ask the question anyway. When it comes to the gaming compact and obviously zoning that down here locally for, for the racetrack here on Benita Beach Road, does this get lumped in? Or parts of this ever get lumped in with other legislation? So it's, it's up or it's down, it's a package deal, you can't separate it out? Or is it a standalone, and are there multiple issues? There's multiple issues per se, but what I'm trying to say is, is it a package deal or do they break it out? Or how do they do it?
To date, they have not been able to break that piece away from the Seminole Compact. Because it, it is a big package. There are going to be some things that will probably, though, my prediction is they're going to try now, because of the court coming back, they're going to try now to splinter some things off. They certainly have kept in mind the fact that they're, the counties that have voted, not unanimously, but voted very much in favor of this, they certainly are keeping that in mind. There has not, this past year, there was a lot of discussion up until the very end. One of the biggest stumbling blocks that they have, and I actually spoke to Senator Latvala about this just a couple of weeks ago, was unfortunately Amokale. Because of the fact that they believe, the Seminoles believe, that that close proximity to this particular track will create enough competition that they're not comfortable with that. They don't really have a problem with the other counties that voted on it. This is the one that's the stumbling block for them. So.
Really?
Back to, yes, sir.
Well, okay.
Yeah, I mean, I, I've, I, I've been told personally that that's the stumbling block, including with Senator Latvala. Senator Latvala was very interested to find out. My opinion of Amokale, I, I, I have never been in it. Um, I've driven by it several times.
I was just going to say, and I had heard that, but I didn't know it was the stumbling block.
Yes, that's what I've been told, including Pepe Diaz. Representative Diaz was carrying the bill a year ago and Pepe was very blunt in, in, you were in the room.
Yep, yep.
When he said that, that's the stumbling block. Uh, he's no longer representative, he's running for the Senate now. But, but, um, so he, but he was very committed and he said to us.
No, no doubt about it.
That, that is exactly what the stumbling block is. So, um, it, it's not going to go away. I mean, the families that own these tracks are desperate enough that it, it's not going to go away. So there's going to continue to be discussion regardless of what the courts are doing. There's lawsuits still sitting. Most of them happen to be, um, filed by the folks up at, at Gretna in the Panhandle, because they're in a desperate need too. It's a very poor community and that's about, the barrel racing they do there is about the only job in town. So they're really still pushing. So, they're really still pushing all of that. So, there's really some, no pun intended, but high roll stakes in this. So, it's not going away, but at the same time, is there any plan right now? Not that I'm aware of, Galvano kind of, Senator Galvano kind of washed his hands a little bit of it, but Senator Galvano is going to be the next president of the senate a year from now. And he has a lot invested in this. He does this not just for us, but he also participates in this across the whole United States with other groups. So, I think that we'll still see more happening.
Well, and, you know, to drill down a little bit further, the proximity to Amokalee, and I don't know, I'll just say, what is it, twenty-five, thirty miles? Rough guess, whatever it is, but, right, you know, more thereabouts. Is there anything that addresses on raw mileage in any of these packages that could?
There hasn't been, and I can tell you that our delegation is held very strong, along with the people that I've talked to outside of our delegation that are very active in these issues, have held very strong to the fact that they didn't want to peel off us, that we all have a united front. Because if somebody is going to get that, all of us should get that that voted for it. So, am I answering your question?
Well, no, you, and, you know, and I guess I would compare it to maybe Miami, and Fort Lauderdale. Where there were both tracks that would be affected, so, and that may be about the same proximity in miles. But over there, it seems completely different. It's urban, there's a, you know, a lot more people, a lot more going on. So, what I'm drilling down at, because we don't have the density or the population over here, is there anything in these other, you know, I'm.
I got it.
Getting at, you know, the difference between Miami and Fort Lauderdale is, what, two million people? Between the two, but that wouldn't be the case here.
That's correct.
And I'm just trying to, you know, play apples here, if it's a raw mileage, or any, you know.
They just keep going back to that, and I just.
And they tell the people on the east coast, stumbling block is
Probably.
Your track over here on the east coast, right?
Although I can tell you that, that Pepe.
Yeah?
Yeah.
I mean, there's only one way to get into Amokalee.
Yeah, yeah.
For this one, you could have them coming from all over the place. To get to Amokalee, it won't be the, right now, it's the destination place to go gamble. If you put one here, they won't go out there, that's for sure.
Yep.
Right, because, I mean, I've driven by it, and you wouldn't even know what it was if you didn't, I mean, because it's just a shed. I mean, that's, sorry, I'm a farm girl, looks like a shed to me.
Yeah, no, no, that's very good. Council, anything else?
Yeah, I just had a minor point to make, which is, as a matter of principle, I don't think we should be using taxpayer money to address private issues. And, so that's one point. And two is, I think on the casino gambling, if to the extent we're punching, we're punching way over our weight. And third, I have a little issue of, are we, we have certain basic priorities we're trying to push, and what's what's happened here before, are we seen as, here's the people with the casino gambling? Those are my comments. So, I don't, I don't need to comment on it, it's just my personal view.
I'm sensitive to what you're saying.
Yeah. Because I would say, we have, the principal point is as follows, I mean, the biggest vote here recently was on medical marijuana, way more than what we're talking about here. And I don't see this, I don't see this council saying, we want to put on this agenda to have medical marijuana shops all over town. So, just a point.
Great. Council, anything else? Carol, thank, Arlene?
So, we would be looking for some direction from city council today on, because I think Carol's looking for as soon as possible to continue. We'd like to know if this would be your continued list, and then also, you know, with removing, of course, the funding for Lover's Key, because that's been secured.
It's out.
Or if there's any revision to this list, I think that's the direction that Carol was looking for today.
Right.
And we haven't really talked about the funding issues, because of the fact that we had the two from last year that were priorities, and we need to have, you're, you need to tell us that that's.
That's the direction of those priorities.
That you want to keep those. I understand from Carl, in my conversations with him, that there have been refined a little bit, and obviously, we will update all of our paperwork in that regard.
Right. Council, I mean, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion, and we keep with the same priorities we had last year, with removing Lover's Key.
Okay. There's been a motion in a second, further discussion?
Yeah, just that I demure on that one issue, but I'm gonna vote for it, out of courtesy of my council members.
Okay, great. Roll call, please.
Councilman Slakta.
Aye.
Mayor Simmons.
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Forbes.
Aye.
Councilwoman Karamba.
Aye.
Councilman DeWitt.
Aye.
Thank you, Carol.
Thank you all very much, and we certainly always send out an invitation, come visit us. We love to see, we love to see you. I miss home whenever I'm gone that long, so it's always nice to see a friendly face.
Right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Carol.
Thank you, Carol, thank you very much. Okay. Council, unless there's an objection, we're gonna move something around here again. We're gonna move up, if you look on page two, the errata walk-on to approve the corrected zoning ordinance seventeen dash oh seven, Horizon Park CPD. Is there any objection to moving that up now?
Nope.
No.
Okay, great. Neil? Or Audrey, you're gonna kick this off, I'm sorry?
I wasn't planning to do a presentation, it's on the consent agenda. After the meeting, there was some clarification of a few issues. I apologize, there's a little cloud on this, it'll be removed, as well as the yellow highlighting. These are the changes, if you have any questions as to the particular changes, it's correcting conditions two A, eight A, thirteen, and fourteen. Primarily adds, that parcel one includes the automobile, in addition to self-service fuel pumps, a service station, and that's just so things are clarified. Also adds, tree, sorry, the native trees, it flushes out the environmental conditions on page eight, including environmentally, the open burning, and being very clear as to the location of the canopy in condition thirteen. And just to strengthen the position, they can go forward with the moratorium, even though it was done during discussions of the moratorium, the actual approval, another condition, just saying that they will comply, except if modified herein, which was done by council.
So, I have a question. I understand the moratorium was discussed extensively. But in your cover letter, you're talking about, these are conforming to city council action? And I guess my question is on number eight. What was the discussion at city council that that's conforming to, the changes you're making? Section eight, A.
Eight was a discussion, and it was mostly between Councilmember Gibson and Councilmember Forbes, it did not get into the vote. And this was how to protect certain trees that went into the footprint. I don't know if Councilman Forbes or Councilman Gibson wishes to elaborate on that.
I can say that I reviewed the video, the movie.
Right.
I mean, of, the movie.
Right.
Of our meeting.
Right.
And what is in these corrections or additions was actually, did happen.
Right, but I'm asking for a legal view on it. Because, because what we're purporting to do here is change a law after it's been approved.
Yes.
And signed.
Yes, which is why we're coming back here.
And what you're suggesting is that we don't go through a normal process of revising a law, so, I need, your legal view is that in section eight, this is what was decided by council, what's in yellow?
That's correct. So, the legal view is, sometimes I'll read a motion out loud, I read it with all the changes. There was additional changes that were not included in, into that motion, but that was not the intent of the legislative body at the time. It's not quite a Scrivener's error, where there was a mistake, but it does, the conform to the discussions. It's not a glitch amendment, because there was discussions on it during the course of the meeting. The tapes were reviewed and discussed to verify it was discussions on the record, but did not make it to the actual ordinance. So, this is a correction, and we have done corrections two or three times, it's not common. But you would not go back to a hearing and open the door to a new hearing in regard to it. It is something just to make sure the record, the ordinance reflects the record.
Right, so my questions are not about the substance of it, it's about the process of it. There are a lot of things, I'm sure it was discussed, the people say it was discussed. There are a lot of things that are discussed, an awful lot of things that are discussed in the context of a law being adopted by the city council. But the law gets approved by the city council. That, by definition, that conforms to their view, because that's what they're deciding. So, we're saying that because certain people discuss certain things? We're now taking a law, and we're gonna go back and quote-unquote, conform it to the discussion?
If I may, it's my recollection that these were all things that we talked about to have as part of it, and apparently didn't make it in there when it was written up. But these were all things that we discussed up here as being part of what we were approving.
Okay, so you're saying what Mike's, that not only were they discussed, but it was a clear decision by council to approve that, even though it was not in writing?
One of the reasons I read what I have is so that I.
Just answer my question, in other words, that, if you don't mind.
Sure.
All right, so what Mike's saying, it was clearly discussed, and it was clearly intended that it would be in? And you're saying that's your understanding?
Right.
Okay.
So, and I do read it out loud for that purpose, and sometimes we get some of it. Sometimes there's an element that was not received during that process. And so, that's where a correction would come before, and it's not, we don't want to have another hearing on it. It's something where, it's just something that did not make it into the record.
Okay, so it's clear to you that that was the intent of council?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Council? Anything else?
Motion to approve, if it hasn't been made already.
Okay, there's been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion in a second, further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Simmons.
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Forbes.
Aye.
Councilwoman Karamba.
Aye.
Councilman DeWitt.
Aye.
Councilman Slakta.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. We are now going to move on to the community development fee schedule.
I'm so mixed up, I don't, I can't find it.
John, you got a thick book there.
My memory is slipping every day, so I'm preparing for questions.
Welcome to the club.
I thought there was something written on that. My pile is so mixed up now.
Good morning.
Good morning, John.
Since I have two items adjacent to each other on the agenda, I simply put them together in one PowerPoint. I did print it out for you beforehand, so if you want to follow along and make comments. Also, I noticed this morning I decided to add slide numbers onto the slide, and when I brought my USBs over, I couldn't remember which file was on here, so we're just going to assume that the file is loaded on the slideshow, is the correct one, and go from there. So, starting off with the development fees, I brought this to you again today, simply because I did not want this process to stop. And I know the last meeting, we had discussed the overall fee concept with the idea that we would come back and discuss downtown development fees at a later date. So, that later date being today, what we're proposing to you is to look at the following schedule for major fees, or major development, minor development, and color palettes. What's gonna happen with major developments is essentially, it takes place of your development order. And it's going to be looking at site work, it's gonna be looking at all the things that would go into a development order application. However, because of the nature of downtown, they tend to be much smaller in nature. And the size of these applications is not as great. So, we are looking at the amount of time it would take to process something of this nature, and assume that fifteen hundred dollars should come close to covering the staff time it would take to go into that. Minor applications include everything from canopies to changing a door, various, paint color, very small improvements to a site. And we thought, because of the limited amount of time involved with that, a fifty-dollar fee would be appropriate to cover the review. As a side note, these fees should probably be something that get phased in over time. I know that there was a discussion in previous fee meetings where it was a concern that, first of all, we wanted to not use our fees to discourage development, and the second was to not discourage smaller developers from doing work. And so, if the council wishes, we can wait as, to enforce these fees for a certain period of time, so that way, there is some development occurring down there, and those that decide to go first essentially are incentivized. And just as a heads up, the final bullet point there, as development and redevelopment begins to gain momentum downtown, I would fully expect to come back with you with additional fees, because the types of applications that we're going to see are going to become much more varied. And we've looked across the state in areas of redevelopment, and we've seen this typical pattern. There's generally one or two fees that come forward, and as development begins to take hold, they realize that the applications they're seeing are not adequately addressed by the types of applications they have. So, we will need to go back and modify our land development code to include new types of applications. If council has any questions or directions on this?
Council? Mike?
So, what would be a major, and what would be considered minor?
A major application would be a new project, let's say for the sake of argument, we discussed it before, longitude would include, would be a major project. It's gonna be a new building, it's gonna have all the infrastructure associated with it. The major application, as it's currently defined, would include the site work, as well as architectural standards. So, it is essentially, while it is not identical to, but it would essentially take the place of the development order in terms of the approval process, and they would simply go from there into their building permits.
So, like with Benson's, they just add it on to the back for that little thing. Would that be considered major or minor?
If my memory serves, that would be, I think it would be major, based upon the number of agencies involved. I was almost ready to say minor, but then I realized the size of the grease traps that were installed, the plumbing, the electricity, all of the additional utilities that were brought into the site to address that expansion.
So, it's based on?
On the number of entities that are involved, plus the scope of the work that's being done.
Okay, so, say it wasn't, say they didn't need the grease trap, say they were just adding a small addition that was either gonna be used for storage, or maybe some more sales floor or something. Would that still be major, or would that be minor?
If they were adding new square footage that had to go through an architectural review, it would go under major. If they're simply changing out fixtures, or colors, or the design on an existing facade, that would go under minor.
Well, I mean, the only thing, the way I'm looking at it is, you know, longitude's gonna be a huge thing, you know, definitely major. But like with the thing on the back of Benson's, we're talking a couple hundred square foot at most.
And I don't want council to be deceived on the complexity of what happened at Benson's. Most of that work was underground and is not visible. So, there were a lot of things that went in, that grease trap that was installed actually wound up under its original installation, winding up in the right-of-way, so we had to work with the applicant to move that grease trap out of the right-of-way. There was, there was a significant amount of utility work that was done to that site.
Well, that one, because of the grease trap and such, you know, it was a little more major.
In the increase of the commercial kitchen area, yes, sir.
But say it was solely extra, either storage or sales space for them, where it was just an addition to the building?
At this point, I believe that would be looked at as a major. I think there would be conditions that we could look at it as a minor, but this is one of the items I was just discussing. I believe that as development begins to occur down there, we're going to start to see applications that don't fit this definition, and we'll need to provide greater distinction between them.
John, what do you do elsewhere in town? Let's say Benson's was on forty-one.
It would fall either under a limited review development order, or would fall under full development.
Well, what would it, would he be paying something?
Dollarize.
It would be based upon the number of agencies reviewing the application and the square footage of the purpose space.
Why don't we just do the same thing as elsewhere in town, why are we having a special?
We don't have to.
Yeah.
It was, but development order applications under the current proposed fee schedule are approximately eight thousand dollars. And so, I was not looking to have the same review time for a project, let's say, longitude, or Benson's, because we've used those, compared to a new two-hundred-acre residential development.
Well, I don't wanna, I wanna be brief on this, because we have so many other things on this agenda, and we spend a lot of time on one fee. Well, I don't want, I want to be brief on this because we have so many other things on this agenda and we spend a lot of time on one fee. But I got a simple point, which is we spent twenty-five to thirty million dollars downtown. And there wasn't a lot of discussion up at this day, it's on the last council, but somewhere between five and ten million was for a massive underground water retention project. And to the extent it was talked about, it was said, that was the key to bringing people downtown. So this, our taxpayers have made a massive contribution. So it's kind of like the same reason I'm talking about a white paper on what we're doing downtown. If we take every individual thing and take that as a litmus test for support or not support of downtown, we're losing track of the fact, we've already put twenty-five to thirty million dollars down there.
Yes, sir.
So, just a thought.
I'm sorry, Amy, did you have something?
I understand the intent here is to try to incentivize some work being done downtown, but whether we should do it at this level, I don't know. I agree with Councilman O'Flynn, O'Ford, O'Flynn, or whatever his name is.
O'Forbes.
O'Forbes, no, well Flynn. That, it needs to be looked at in total, you know, we can't have these isolated proposals without understanding how it all works together. So we need to move on the white, are we getting a white paper or not? All right, so.
With John and Arlene the other day about that?
Yes, sir, and just so everyone knows, the only thought towards incentivizing development would be the idea of phasing in these fees. The fees themselves were created with the same intent that we had for other fees that we proposed to you. And that was to look at the amount of time and staff resources was involved with the review.
Just one last point, I empathize with Mike, we don't want to hurt the little guy. Which is actually what he's saying, I think, and I agree with that. So I'm, just another thought, but I mean, what are we doing all around town with respect to the little guy? So to speak.
I'm going to jump in here, can we postpone this conversation until we have the white paper? And I think maybe that'll make it more timely?
That would be fine.
Is that, council, is that all right, may I nod at the head? You know what I mean?
Great idea.
Yeah, okay. Why don't we just kind of pull this, put it on the shelf for now and when we have that discussion, the white paper discussion, Arlene, if that's okay, we'll do it at that time?
Would council want to see the remaining fee schedule go forward on its current track and simply discuss the downtown fees? Or do you want the entire fee discussion delayed until that time?
I would say downtown unless council disagrees, but yeah, okay. But then there's part of me that also doesn't want to necessarily segment it out, but perhaps?
I don't look at it as that detrimental, I just wanted to make sure we were all on the same page.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much. And council, anything else for John? All right, community development operations, so I guess, I guess.
Well, and that's a very good point, council. And simply, this I look at as the beginning of a discussion. And I know that Councilman Corumba's probably been the most vocal of it, but I don't think that this is something that is something that we should delay. In fact, I almost want to thank the zoning chairman to come talk about a workshop because these types of discussions, I think, makes everyone a little more efficient in our jobs. The more that we see the different aspects of the review, I think the better it is. And if this goes well, I think I will send this presentation to my mother who still does not know how to describe my job, so. I'll base that, your reaction.
Amy, would you be all right if we postponed this?
Sure.
Oh, I, I mean, it's, how long are you going to talk? I mean, what do you think your presentation is, like five minutes or more than that?
I've got thirty-two slides.
Yeah, okay. I proposed this as a workshop because I really do not think this is appropriate. I mean, we can have a casual start of the conversation, but I think there's so many questions. As you know, when I started to list the things that I thought we should cover, and I think we should have dialogue, I don't think you should just give a presentation. I think the council member should come in and
Oh, I agree with that. And that's why I want to make sure you had a hard copy of it and I would not treat this as a one-way discussion. If there's questions or conversation, I am available to that, but if we want to do this at a different date, that's entirely your will.
Amy, you mentioned a workshop and I think I'm in favor of that.
Yeah, that was my original proposal, so that's
But I don't know how council feels, would a workshop be okay? Anybody opposed to a workshop? Okay?
Of course, we have a meeting time, that's the problem.
Right.
But, but I'm okay with that.
Maybe we could do another one of our four o'clock's ahead of a five-thirty or so, or whatever, whatever it is, I don't want to limit it on time, but.
And that's perfectly fine, the only thing I would ask of council is now that we've got a little bit of a head start, if you would please take a look at what you have been presented and if there are additional items you want discussed or researched or things that we can provide a little bit of background prior to the meeting, so that way we can be as productive as we can.
No, absolutely, and we'll work with Arlene and we'll get that scheduled, great, great, thank you very much, thanks, John. Okay, let's see, I don't think this agenda, I think this agenda move is here now, moved up, discussed legisla, yeah, sorry.
I'm totally confused, what are we doing?
Well, no, we had legislative priorities, I'm sorry. So now we're going to move on to the consent agenda. Council, if you could take a look there, anything we want to pull?
D.
D. Okay?
B.
B?
C.
C. Do I hear an A?
Move to approve A.
All right, we're pulling A.
There's an E also.
Well, E is gone, that's Fred's, we did, no?
No, there's an E.
No, we did the
No, we didn't do this one yet, the Horizon Park already?
Oh, okay. Sorry, that was
All right, yeah, that got moved.
So, are we going to pull A or are we going to approve A?
Approve A. We'll approve A and I'll speak to it as I
No, we're going to pull A, we're going to pull every single item here.
Motion to approve A.
Motion to approve A, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, further discussion, roll call please.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilman Dewitt?
Aye.
Councilman Slatter?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye, and I'm sorry Greg, in my haste, please, your discussion on A.
No, it wasn't, I just wanted to thank the fire department.
You got to pass it before you know what's in it, buddy.
I was just going to thank the fire department for its continued work with the city. And partnership, that's all.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
I agree.
Absolutely, thank you, thank you very much.
Mayor, just the staff too as well, we really appreciate our deputy chief, Tim Fernandez and all the all the help that he does for our community development department as well, he's a great partner to us as well.
Absolutely, thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move on to item B. And I think that was you, Peter, right?
No, it was Mike.
Mike, I'm sorry.
I just pulled it mainly because reading it, it said that we're authorizing staff to enter into negotiations. Shouldn't their proposal basically laid everything out to where, I mean, what do we have left to negotiate?
It basically does, their proposal lays everything out and we just put all of that information into a contract that'll come before you on August second.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we were choosing based on all the information and not having things change later. And also, what is the length of the contract, because I didn't see that in here?
Typically, we do renew it, it's a five-year period that's renewed annually, but we can change that at any, we changed it the last time, because at any time, it also says in the contract that you can pull and ask for us to go back out for RFP, which is what we did this time.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, Mike, I kind of see your point here, you're saying what? We don't know what the substance of the basis for the recommendation is here?
Well, that's, what I was wondering was because it says in here that we're authorizing staff to enter into negotiations, but I was just, would assume that during the, you know, whatever that they're proposing would have all the information in their fees and what they're going to do, everything else, so.
Correct, yeah, they can't make any changes.
And so it's a five-year but renewable annually?
Yeah, that's also how we do the artist cottages, we do most of our other leases that we have that it's a five-year term, but they can choose either, or we could choose not to renew annually.
So isn't that really just a one-year term then?
Yes.
Yes.
It just means we don't have to go out for
Or RFP.
Every year.
Yeah.
I would request that council be given at least a ninety-day heads up when we're about to renew it so that if we want to see us go back out on bid, we can do it.
We can add that in.
Yeah, good point. Council?
Move to approve?
Okay. Motion to accept and a second, further discussion?
Just on Fred's point, is that on the five-year one or an every-year one?
No, it, every time it comes up to that year renewal, that we get a heads up so that if we have a different mindset, we've got adequate time to make the move and
Then what's the point of a five-year thing not doing an RFP? What's the concept, if in ninety days, if we want to put it out to RFP, why have a five-year?
Well, that's a good question, but that option is there.
Yeah.
Why have a five-year, make it a year?
It, I think what it does is it gives
I think it makes
Conflicting each other.
No, it makes you have an RFP every year, whereas this one, if you don't want to have an RFP, you can just renew the contract.
Correct.
So that's
Correct.
So we have more flexibility if we have a one-year and, because RFPs are
They're, they're
They take a little time.
Yeah.
That's why you want the five-year contract. But it gives you the out, so we have the best of both worlds, so I think, I think we should continue that process.
Audrey, anything to add to that one way or another?
No, I think, I'm just counting the months, I would go probably to March would be when you would want to pull it. Because an RFP does take us, especially if there's
With advertising?
It could take three months to go through the process. So it's really for the city's efficiency not to have an RFP every year.
Right.
Unless so determined, so I think probably March would be when we should ask the question.
That's fine.
Yeah.
So if we have to write it, make sure it's structured correctly, make sure it's properly advertised, so there's lots of competition.
Okay. Council, there's been a motion and a second, further discussion, Amy, yes, sir.
Councilman Forbes' suggestion was not just for this specific contract, but for all contracts. If there's a renewal coming up, we want to have a heads up approximately three months in advance. Is that true or is it just for this one?
Well, I had in mind this one, but it's not, it wouldn't be that hard to put a
Right.
information piece out letting us know so that if any of us had a different point of view, we could have adequate time to state it.
Oh, I'm sorry, but I assume that you know of when the renewals are coming, Nicole?
We do when they're
You keep a record of it or something and then it's, when you know when it's coming, so if you just inform, give us a list, a calendar, these are coming forward?
Yep, we can do that.
Would that be hard?
No, we would need, as Audrey was saying, that we would, we do need more than ninety days because our whole process takes longer than that. If you do choose to do an RFP, you're going to be beyond when the contract is already expired. So we would need something longer actually, if that's what
That's what you're figuring, right, March, or somebody said March?
For this particular one, it would have to be March, but if you, if we did it for everything else, it could be
Every month.
It could.
It could be.
And just to point out, council, there was one recently that we discussed at staff meeting and that was historic preservation utilization of the Lyles Building. I presume council has no objection with that continuing forward because there was a time that you could elect for them not to continue using.
Council, is that fine? With Lyles, okay. And Mike, you had something, I think?
Well, no, I was just going to say, I agree with Amy, I think we should look at it for all of them, if we have a choice, you know.
Could we just email notifications?
Oh, yeah.
Council, further discussion?
Oh, just to add, you know, the charter does say the city manager contract for services when approved by the council. So everything everybody's saying is consistent with that.
Good.
Okay, further discussion? Roll call please.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilman Dewitt?
Aye.
Councilman Slatter?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Okay, item C.
That one is mine as well.
No, it's still not.
It's mine as well, so I'm still here.
I had a couple of questions. Part of it's for the public, how, what was the process where the state somehow owned all the bottoms of all the rivers or something?
That would be an Audrey question.
An Audrey question.
That's a big question.
I wasn't planning on talking about this today, I'd have to do research. The triggering years is usually, I think it's nineteen fifty or nineteen fifty-three, was when the state land leases as far as taking sovereign lands, there was one before that. And it's derived from the constitution and also the land grant issues, some of it's Spanish issues, some of it's so, I can provide you with the research or an article on it, I have not looked at it for a few years.
No, what you said's sufficient.
Okay, what I do want to point out is I think Mr. West misunderstood that in this case, we're the tenant, we're not the landlord. So this is us getting with the state, so the facilities that he's talking about, our city facilities, that we're getting the right to have in the state waters through a submerged land lease. And we've had to repair the structures in the past to keep compliant with the lease. We try to keep it at a bare minimum until council actually has moved forward. In past years, we looked at the Bamboo Village site and, and I don't like to use the word expel, we relocated the people. It took about a year and a half to do relocations. In the past, we have gone, and a lot of that's economy-based with the downtown redevelopment. I think we looked at it, we did send an RFP, there were no satisfactory proposals at that time. It was during not a good economic time. And I think that's something that the city manager will probably bring back to you.
Yeah, I'm going to vote to support this, but the other reason is we, even that bridge has got posts or little timbers down into the river bottom, so we have to do it. The good news is it's only five hundred bucks. But I would be, I was surprised how many people were asking me about this five hundred dollar item.
This is a standard submerged land lease.
And it is And it is for a five-year period, so once, we're just at our five-year renewal time. But, but you are correct, Councilmember Forbes, in that the footbridge is included in this lease and for us to have that footbridge because it is in the water, we do have to renew this lease because it's their land.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second, further discussion? Roll call please.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilman Dewitt?
Aye.
Councilman Slatter?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Great, Peter?
Yes.
All right, now, D.
So I guess this is Ann's, I had a chat with Arlene yesterday, I think she had a chance to talk to Ann. And so I'm coming back to the question we had at our budget workshop that I think we need a clear explanation of the effect of the entire Wonder Gardens situation on the city finances.
Okay.
So that includes the fact that that three million dollar loan's not going to be paid. And it includes the on-loan from the impact fee fund to the general fund. And so I don't know if today's the time, we can defer it, but my suggestion is actually to go back to the CAFER and the balance sheet in the CAFER, which lays out the assets and liabilities in the general fund. And among those assets in the general fund is three million four, I'm assuming part of that three million four is the three million.
The three, that's correct.
Right, right. And I would appreciate that council gets just a clear explanation of what the effects are of all of them. Because there's been a lot of talk about that was non-spendable and I know there was a footnote in the budget at a glance. And it, you know, when you look at the subcategories in the general fund budget, just like one subcategory is five million, one for disaster and operating reserves, another one is three million four for, or three million for the loan. But in my view, it's clear the general fund is going, is being hit by a negative three million dollars. All right, and I don't think we've had that clear explanation. So I don't, I don't know if we got to do it today, but I'd appreciate that.
Great.
I just want to point out, I sent an email to Ann and she provided me with some additional information
which is going down the path you suggested, it's not quite there, but I fully, it helps. And it addressed just this point you're bringing up, because it is the case that when you walk, work it through from all these funds
from the beginning in March fifteenth, you see that the general fund has taken a three million dollar hit. Which is intuitive, but from the accounting process on the fund accounting, it isn't, it wasn't clear.
Right.
So he, she has some material prepared, but I think, I think, I think my opinion is we need to work on that a little bit because there's some extraneous information that was, makes it more confusing than where we're trying to go. So, and then you could just provide a written material, we could talk about it next time.
Yeah.
It's not going to change, it's, the result is the same.
Just defer it so we have a holistic package.
Okay, that's fine.
I think that's good.
And my own personal confusion came from, in other words, now I'm just reading from the budget message. You know, at the time the loan was made, the city had segregated within the fund balance an offset of three million dollars considered as non-spendable. It's true that the three was classified as an account receivable, that's a non-spendable account receivable. But once again, it's in the fund balance.
Right.
And I just think everybody on council needs to see that and understand, in the general fund balance.
Correct, correct.
Thanks.
Thank you.
So if we could defer it, I'd appreciate this item.
No, and I agree with that. Counsel, any problems with that, deferring it? Okay.
Deferring discussion, or deferring moving the...
Deferring moving it. Because I'd just rather have, there's no rush to do this. And I'd just rather have in one place a clear explanation that we're all getting about the effect of all the moving parts, not just one moving part. And considering there's no rush, I mean, this is fine in the future.
I just have one question.
Sure.
And that is, during your budget workshop on Friday, you had mentioned not to put too many things on the agenda for August 2.
Yeah.
This one relates to budget, so...
Yeah.
Do you want it off?
I actually don't think this is a rush in any event, whenever we get to it. I, this...
We've got seven years to pay it back.
We've got, yeah, right, right.
Or two years.
Yeah.
Under the terms of the interfund balance.
Well, but that's under the terms of the interlocal, that's through the...
Yeah, it's not, this is not a rush.
The Newt Springs Wonder Garden, to not, to pay ourselves back. For the contract, yes.
Right.
But not to pay the road impact fee fund back.
Okay, I'm not sure I'm back, but...
So I think the short answer to our question is, it doesn't have to be for August 2nd. Right.
Okay. Not for August 2nd.
I just don't see why it matters at all, because it's...
Yeah, it doesn't matter.
You know, we're just moving $3 million from one fund to another, and...
Well, you're right, but I don't think there's a clear line of sight for the public on the effect of this on the general fund. That's what I'm trying to get to.
Yeah, it's going to be $3 million less than the general fund. That's the effect.
That's not what was said at the budget hearing. So that's why, I just, they're not trying to make a big deal out of it, I just want to clear it up.
Mike, anything else?
No, I mean, whether we do it now or later, I think it's the same thing. It's just, if you're just trying to get the point across to the public that, yeah, there's $3 million less to spend, then that's the case. You know, we've said it, we're saying it right now.
Nothing's going to change.
It's, nothing's changing at all, you know, we're just delaying the, we have to do this again, of the moving of the money. So, that's all I'm saying.
Yeah. Do, all right, let's do this. Why don't we make a motion to delay, or whatever we want to call it, accept it, and then vote on it, and then I guess we can let our thoughts be known that way.
So I'd make a motion that we await when staff gets to it, no rush, just a clear explanation of the effect of the entire collapse of this project. Not collapse, but the fact that we're not getting paid, and how it affects the other budget items. One clear explanation in one place that doesn't focus on this one item being an offset of the general fund, but focuses on the actual effect on the general fund. Just, that's all.
Okay, there's been a motion, is there a second?
I'll second for discussion.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second further discussion. Greg, do you...
Yeah, I just got a quick question. Ann, can you explain this in five minutes or less? Could, I'm just, you know, I'm not putting you on the spot. If you say no, we'll defer it. If you can say, in five minutes or less, this, this money's going from the general fund or reserve fund to, back to impact fees, fine. If not, you'd rather do it in a presentation?
It's, it's fine. I think it is important that all the council members feel comfortable with how it's explained, and how it is explained to the public. The only thing, I will make a comment right now, is during the budget, we were talking about the spendable portion of the fund balance. And so I never meant to be misleading that...
I'm going to tell you one little...
No, I don't think you were, I'm just saying, to be fully transparent, where's it coming from, and what's, what's the end option or game at the end of the budget?
And that's why I concur that it would be good to have a separate discussion and, and make it clear.
Okay.
Okay.
I don't think it matters one way or the other, but I do think that it's really important that we pay back the road impact fee fund as soon as possible.
Agreed.
And I, and the outcome is going to be the same. So the question, no matter how we do the accounting or do the presentation, is that, that the city has lost $3 million in cash.
Correct.
And at some point, we'll exchange that $3 million for title to the Everglades Wonder Garden property, which becomes a liquid, changes from a liquid asset to a fixed asset that we're going to have. And, and I don't think that's going to make any difference, but I have a concern about having this loan out to the, the road impact fee fund, you know. And we don't need to go into that, so I just assume have it paid off, finish that up, and then we can talk about the fact that there has been a loss in a cash asset of $3 million, and we can't change that, because the loan was not repaid. But to compensate for that, we're going to have title to property.
Correct.
And that conceptual thing is not going to change, no matter how we make our presentation. But we can emphasize that at our budget hearing. So I'm okay with passing this here, or waiting until we do it maybe at our budgeting hearing, either way.
So why don't I withdraw my motion and suggest that we pass this?
Yeah.
And then we'll get a clear explanation at some point.
Yeah, we can have a discussion whenever, but wouldn't it be better accounting-wise, just to have it moved? That way, there's no more footnotes, this 3,000, this $3 million isn't really here, it's really over here, it just, I would think it would make everything clear.
We've unwrapped it, which is, I mean, we've unwound it, which I think is important. I think that's a procedural thing that's important. So I'd be in favor of passing it, but if you want to wait another month...
I make a motion, we pass this today, then.
Right, second it.
Yeah.
There's no wrapping paper, we know what's in the box now?
No, no, but we need a full discussion, I appreciate...
Right, absolutely.
Councilman...
I would like...
Oh, Forbes. Oh, Forbes.
I would like to...
I have trouble with your names. I want to, the problem is, I want to call you Peter and not...
Well, he's Peter, too.
But then you'll, like, see two of us.
I want to call you Fred and you Mike, so that's, that's really...
Go ahead. Say it, O'Gibson, how's that?
O'Gibson.
I would like to make sure that when we revise the budget sheets to reflect this, that we clearly show at the bottom of the sheet an explanation, not for me, not for the other people, but for the public. Because it's got to be clear to them what's happened.
Yeah. Where Ann has gone, and I suggested, you start with, prior to March 15th, when we did the loan, and just eliminate a lot of the...
Footnotes.
The accounting terminology, and just show a simple process. You know, where you started, where you ended, where you were in the middle, and where we're going to be at the end.
Okay.
I think that would be helpful, and in fact, when, when I went over your materials, that's basically where I came. And it does show that we are down $3 million, but we're exchanging that for a hard asset, which is the title to the property. So that's what we're going to end up with. I think that would be helpful.
Okay.
And just to elaborate a little bit more on Fred's point, as I said, you know, because I know how I look at these budgets, and I'll open myself up for criticism or ridicule, but the non-glazed-over eyeballs version, so the public can see it?
Okay.
Exactly.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have to vote?
Yes, so there's, you withdrew that, right?
Yeah, yeah, I think we vote, did we vote?
Do, all right, why don't we vote? Let's vote. Motion and second, let's vote, no more discussion.
Councilwoman Karamba?
Aye.
Councilman Dewitt?
We have a motion to approve now.
Yes, it was true.
Yeah, thanks, Mike, no, thank you, sorry.
Yes. Councilwoman Karamba?
Aye.
Councilman Dewitt?
Aye.
Councilman Sata? Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Okay, great.
Let me just, one quick footnote for Ann, which is, I think, part of the, call it what you want, lack of clarity, confusion, is the budget at a glance where it says, beginning fund balance, I really think that seems to be the unassigned fund balance.
It is unassigned.
So that's where it starts.
Right.
All right, so all of that's got to be kind of cleared up.
Right, I agree, thank you.
Wonderful, thank you. And I believe we're now on mayor and council member items. Let's look at item A, review and discuss the draft city manager performance evaluation form with draft criteria. Councilman Forbes, and for people in their packages, because they know it's big, it's green sheet 17-07, 0271. Fred?
All right, I'm going to try and make this a much briefer presentation, since it's now...
In three hours or less, how's that?
No, no. First of all, we, the, you did get my proposal, which was, I called it a straw man. It's kind of like the draft of a letter. And we got some input from Councilman Karamba, and we also got significant input from Deputy Mayor O'Flynn. I think that if you look at the input, my thing and their, and what they have, there are major differences, and I think the best solution to this is probably to have a workshop. Now, I think personally, there's merit to having it moderated by somebody that is not one of us, but we've got to keep a strong hand, because I can tell you that the odds are that no matter what evaluation system we come up with, if we even have one, you could, you, there's no law that says we have to have one. Also, you could have one as simple as overall performance, and you write up what you want, and sign your name as satisfactory, unsatisfactory, walk on water, whatever else. They, there are different philosophies, one-to-three scoring, adjectives only. I know that in the background, that we just randomly picked places and got it, the bulk of them were on a one-to-five scoring with adjectives. A couple were one-to-three, one was adjectives only, I think there was one that was a one-to-seven. I do think that...
Pronouns and prepositions allowed, or no?
Yeah, you can do that, you can modify and all that. But I think we need, I think what we need to do is talk about it, and then we've got to do what's called the rule of Robert's Rules of Order, and that is, we come up with an issue, and we vote on it, and you know what? If, if, I can make any of them work, I can make any one, even a blank piece of paper, so... But I know some of us feel passionately a certain way. There are people that will always tend to rate high. Part of it was maybe their background before they got on council. There will be other people that will tend to not want to write very much on what they would like to see improved, or what they're not happy with. That's just human nature, and you can't legislate human nature unless you want to have a fine or something. So I think that that's what I would recommend. I do think there is merit to having someone that has no dog in the fight moderate this situation. One last thing that I want to let everybody know, I had a lot of philosophical, I got no input on this from either city manager or Audrey. This, this was stuff that was non-from the government. I did, I did let them do the final edit, looking for typos.
Right.
Not Carl, Jane and Arlene participated in that. You can... One of the things that Audrey, I did ask her philosophically, I said, Audrey, correct me if I'm wrong. And a wise person told me that this ought to be pointed out. If all of us gave any, any of, either Audrey or Carl, fives all the way across, meaning all accounts, I'm not saying they would, but if they did, when it comes time to contract renewal, it doesn't have any legal bearing on whether the contract gets renewed. There is, you could, some of you may feel there's a moral connection, but there's no legal connection. Another thing that I found out that you all need to know, and that is that on terminating a contract midway, or a third of the way, or 80% of the way through, with the, our city council or city attorney, that's pretty straightforward, but she informed me that the state, and we're getting back to home rule, they passed some statute that it's not quite that simple when you're terminating a contract of a city manager.
City charter.
Yeah, all right. So we have other issues to follow there. So I do know that there seemed to be even interest from the public on what was going on, and I will say, I don't think they understood what we were doing, simply trying to come up with evaluation forms and criteria. So that's, I do, I don't think that we have enough time to get into this adequately today. So that would be my proposal, we do it as a workshop.
Well, thanks for spooling this up, and Amy, I know you had quite, so I want to come down here, and then I'll come, we can come around the horn.
I'd like to say is that this, this process that we're going through illustrates something that I have been struggling with, because there are certain things that I think the council needs to work on collegially, rather than in the formal way where we have something written up, and then somebody reacts to it. I mean, we'd spend like hundreds of hours of typing, and I don't have a secretary to do that, so I'd rather discuss these things. But my purpose in getting somewhat more detailed involved in here is that, for me, when we came, when it comes to the point where we have to consider renewals of contracts of our senior staff members, I would like to know what everybody else is thinking. And I would like to know it in a substantive way. So for me, if somebody just puts some numbers on the thing, it doesn't help me. I very much appreciate the, those council people who took the time to fill out a performance evaluation and make some comments, because I learned more from the comments than I did from the numerical ranking. And I think there are two purposes here. When you do a performance evaluation of personnel, you do it so that they can profit from your analysis, and they can get better. Everybody can get better, no matter how perfect you are, there's always an area where they can improve. That's why people take education, that's why they go to things, and why they have discussions with people who are their supervisors. So I personally believe that it's one of the council's responsibilities to do this in a very substantive way, and it takes effort, but I'd like to do it in a collegial way, both for when we get to the point where we do the performance evaluations, but even this form that we're trying to devise. So if this device, this form that we devise, doesn't encourage all council members to, to really get involved and help each other, so that we come to a proper decision when it's time for renewal of contracts, then we're not accomplishing anything. Otherwise, we might as well do the numerical thing, we go and put our numbers in, and we throw it out, and then it's over, and it's, it's a lot, it's a lot less work to do it that way. So that's why I came up with the suggestions. Thank you, Fred, for getting those city app forms that we could look at. Everybody does it differently. I personally do not like the numerical one, but one that's very simple, I could go with. But I really would like to have a lot of commentary from everybody, but of course, there's a lot more work for us. And unfortunately, since we can't talk to each other, we, you know, we go around in circles some way. And even the commentary that you made today, Fred, was very helpful to me, because there are things that I didn't think about in this. So that, I agree, we need another venue to do this, and let's get it done, because once we do the city manager, then I think the attorney form will be similar as a sample, and we'll be able to decide, you know, what we want to do, those categories. We want more categories, less categories, you know.
Yep.
The more categories we are, we put in there, the harder it's going to be for us to do a thorough job. So that's the trade-off. So we need a discussion.
Right.
I didn't even get a chance to look at that, the other Peters things, because I just saw it today for the first time, so I'd like to at least look at that.
Thank you, Amy. Greg?
I just, I got a, I mean, being in the business for a little bit, doing it, my biggest question is, is kind of going back to Fred and Amy's comments about, are we doing this in order to justify, or justify one way or another to, to extend or terminate a contract? Or are we doing it for them to get better? And that, and that's my comment about it, and the reason why I make it that way, because when we went to renew both their comments, I mean, their contracts, this seemed to be the staple of everything. Well, a couple of us didn't do it, a couple of us gave them fours and fives, a couple of us changed the whole way to do it, but it was all determined on their renewal of their contracts. Because that's what everybody kept saying, is, well, the evaluation process wasn't good, so we don't want to renew their contracts.
Just one footnote, I clearly never said that, just so.
Well, that was the, that was the...
People did say it, right.
That was the overarching comment, is that we don't want to renew the contract, because we don't like the evaluation process.
That clearly was, that clearly was said.
So that, so that's kind of going back to putting the cart before the horse, or whatever. What is the purpose? I think that's the first and foremost question that we need to answer as a council. Are, are contracts for our senior staff members going to be tied to these evaluations? If yes or no, we need to answer that question as a body. If yes, then, you know, they should be at the same timeframe. You know, evaluations are doing July, or doing March, contracts are renewed in June. If not, put them, you know, but I do think...
And I think, Greg, just to kind of add in here a little bit, Fred had said, and he discussed it with Audrey, there is no legal...
No, there isn't.
There is no legal tie, but do we want to, as a council, make a moral tie, for lack of a better word, or, you know? And we'll let Greg finish up, and then screw it, sorry, buddy.
That's just my, my philosophical question, just be, because at the fire department, we do yearly evaluations. Good, bad, or indifferent, they're not...
And they're doing, let's just use what you said, they're doing March?
They're doing July.
For the contracts.
We have to do everybody's in July.
Which would be two or three months ahead of time, or whatever it is?
Well, ours aren't based on merit, so that's what I mean. It's just, how are you doing as an employee? You, and we've got three categories, satisfactory, needs improve, unsatisfactory, or needs improvement. And we have 15 different things, whether it's...
You have three?
You have three? I remember those days, when I-
Just an X on there, and the way ours is, if you get satisfactory, no comment is needed. If you needs a needs improvement, or unsatisfactory, a comment is needed for each one, whether it's punctuality, job knowledge, job performance, works well with others, works well with the public.
Good idea.
And that's the way ours is, and if it's an unsatisfactory, if I give Audrey an unsatisfactory on punctuality, all right, Audrey, you need to be better, more timely for meetings and X, Y, and Z, if I give it on whatever else. And that's the way-
That's good for her.
We do it. And, and, but it's not tied to anything.
And we'll put Schlack in charge of punctuality.
That, I guess that's, I guess that's where it's, where I'm getting at, is, it seemed to me, when we did their contract, their contract was tied definitely to this, in my opinion, whereas on ours, it's not. It's just tied to, are you a good and valued employee now? Down, I know in our place, if you've gotten two or three bad evaluations, that can lead to performance disciplinary action. You get two bad evaluations, hey, you get, you get written up for not having good job knowledge, or punctuality, or whatever it may be, so it can lead to termination.
That's progressive discipline.
Correct.
Right.
Based on that.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you, Greg. Steve, and then Pete.
Could you clarify for me, Meg, is it, my understanding is to do a performance evaluation for a city manager is mandatory? Is that correct? It is.
Per the charter, or per state law?
Actually, per our Personnel Policies Guide, it's, they're required to be annually. There's not a set date on it, but it's annually.
Great, thank you. Steve, anything else? Uh, Pete?
So, I had a few things. One is, I clearly think the purpose of this is constructive criticism of the employee. That's point one. Point two is, it is the senior, it's the biggest management job we have here. So, there are differences between that, and so to speak, rank and file employees, so I don't see it like, you know, you're getting demerits over time, and that may be fine for employees. My third point is, to adjust Fred's point, I've looked at what Fred did, I've looked at what Amy did, obviously, I know what I wrote, I don't really think we're far apart at all, as opposed, what Fred seems to be saying, that I don't think, we clearly don't need some mediator to get us together.
Right.
And the reason I say that is that, and one other observation, it's not, it's not this is what the issue, in other words, it's not this is linked indirectly to the contract, but obviously, if you have concerns here, you could have concerns with respect to the contract.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, they're, to a certain extent, they're siblings. They're not directly linked, but the thought pattern could be similar. The reason I don't think we're far apart is that if the goal of this is simply to give constructive feedback, you don't need to hamstring the, anybody on one format that you might have, or another format that Amy might have, or another format that I might have, you don't need to hamstring them, because the goal is to simply have this be a catalyst for constructive feedback. So, I actually, the reason I said to Greg, I didn't say that, I had, the old form, I didn't have any particular problem with. I, I thought a lot of it was irrelevant, I just crossed it out and gave Carl constructive feedback. That worked for me, you know? So, it doesn't have to be scientific. I thought the numbering system leading to one average made no sense for me, and that's, this is not with respect to Carl at all, all right? But if you had somebody who, you know, robbed a bank, that person would get a one on a particular item, all the fifty other things, that person could get a perfect score. That makes no sense, all right? So, that's why I didn't go with the numbering system, and I just was, I had a lot of commentary that I sat down with Carl and talked about. So, I don't know why we can't have a form, and this thing with three versus five, I mean, that seems like small ball to me, I happen to like what Greg does at the fire department, but why don't we just have a form where the substance of the form makes sense to everybody? And then, if individual council people, like, you know, I saw, you know, Steve, he marked everything a five, and he put the, the total thing was a five. If individual council people are comfortable with that, they do that. But that provides feedback to the city manager. Other people might say, that's not for me, but as long as they are addressing the substantive issues, and give that feedback, I think the document works for the purposes intended. So, just give flexibility. Not, we, we don't have to, if, if we have a scoring system, if some people want to do it, do it. If other people don't want to do it, for good reason, fine. That's my thought.
Thanks, Pete.
No, can I-
Yeah, go ahead, and then we'll go to-
Meg, quick, quick question. For other employees, I think the numbering system was created because it was based on merit, they had to get so many points, or so much number.
Correct.
Okay, that's why.
We are on merit.
That's a difference, that's what I'm saying.
And it would be the recommendation, if you're, the, Deputy Merrill Flynn is correct, if there is nothing tied to a total score, a, a scoring system is not necessary, it's-
But if you want it, you can have it.
Correct.
Yeah, yeah.
Or you can do a simple pass fail, meets expectations, like you guys said, the department meets expectations, unsatisfactory. You don't necessarily need a number, if there's nothing directly tied to it.
And I think that's much different for the, the senior executive versus, you might have appropriately more metrics, I mean, Greg would know this better than I, but you might have more metrics than you would ma-
Absolutely.
For individual department heads. But, you know, that's why I'm not in love with metrics on this job. But doesn't mean you're wrong. If you want it, fine. That's what I'm saying. So, I don't think we're far apart.
No, I, I, I agree with what Peter's saying, that I think we're not that far apart. I think, I'll give you one area that I will vote no on. I do not think we should sit here and do negative, even if it's constructive criticism of our two key employees. Whatever I write up, it goes into the personnel file, any of you can get it, you could, actually, you could set it up where Meg distributes each one's evaluation to the other council. But I, I don't, other than if some horrible thing has occurred, I don't think that would be a good thing. I think that, and I, I had a job like this for a number of years. Basically, these two people serve at the pleasure of council. You have to understand that sometimes just a different philosophy of a different council does not jive with the philosophy of that person, doesn't mean that they're not a capable whichever, it just simply means that you want to make a change because you want to make a change. You don't have to justify a change. I mean, it's that simple. I worked in that, all the appointees of the state government are that way. In Washington, it's that way. It's, they can get rid of you for, they don't like the color of the suit you wore, that you wore. It's not fair, but that's the way it is. And in a sense, these jobs tend to be that, although they're performance-driven. I know Chief Dagel, who I have a lot of respect for, he basically serves at the pleasure of the fire commission. And those rating forms do not guarantee him that he's going to get renewed at all. That comes down to when you go to renew, and also, if you're renewing, there's a negotiation on wages and all that, or salary.
Great. Thanks, Fred. Mike?
Well, I guess it, you know, kind of sounds like we, we need to do a workshop on it, and, and work out what we're going to do, but I, I kind of agree what's been saying, been said up here. I mean, the, the current form, numbers one through five, it's, I used to write, I used to have to do this for over a hundred employees, when I was a manager for Publix. And if they were there less than two years, I had to do it quarterly. If they were there over two years, I had to do it twice a year. So, I had to write a lot of these things, and I can tell you, everyone was meaningless. Because on a day-to-day basis, you do something wrong, I'm going to tell you, if you do something good, and I notice it, I'm going to tell you.
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean, when it comes time to have to write something down, I can't remember, you know, especially with a hundred something employees, but I, I can tell you with Carl or Audrey, if they do something that I like, you know? And, and a lot of times, doing your job, you know, is just, I, I, I don't feel like you should have to praise somebody all the time, because they did their job. So, I mean, you're not going to get a lot of compliments from me, unless you really did something above and beyond. But if you did something that I'm not happy with, I'm going to bring it up. So, I mean, you know, whether I should, maybe I should just write that down, and give it to Meg, and have it put in the, you know, file, but I mean, I, I, I kind of think it's a waste of time to, like, the current one, I think, is a complete waste of time. And, and like, on the past ones, I always looked at it as, you know, you have one through five, three is you doing your job. Four, you know, you, you know, you're going a little bit above and beyond. Five, you better be a mind reader, and know what I want before I know I want it. So, I mean, that's how I look at those numbers, and, and then, of course, you know, two would need some improvement, and like, one, you're, you know, basically, you should be fired. So, I mean, that, that's how I look at the numbers there, you know? Three is pretty much what you should be getting, unless you're going way above, or, you know, really screwing up. But I, I think more of it has to do with what you write down, what the feedback is. And, and unfortunately, as it is, normally, I just convey that by talking to them, and whether I should be writing that down, so it goes in a file, if that's the better way to do it. But that's, that's just how I feel, and, you know?
Right.
I, I think it should be more of an improvement tool, to let them know. But then, when it does come time for, you know, the contract to come up, I don't know how everybody else feels, unless I see that, or we all bring it up at, at a meeting, so I, I don't know if it'd be better if before contract time, we come, you know, we ask Meg, hey, what's the feedback been, you know, what, what's the evaluation's been looking like? So, I, I don't know how that, that goes, but, 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 you know, I guess apparently, we just need to sit down and kind of figure out what, what we're going to do, whether it be one form for everybody to use, or just kind of like, whatever anybody feels like doing. If you just want to write down your feedback, do it, or you want to stick with the current form, you know, one that you came up personally, but if it's not tied to a metric of you need certain points to get a raise, or anything, if it's not tied to that, then I guess we really don't need a form for everybody to use, it can just be what you feel like doing on your own.
Fred, how do you want to proceed with this? Because, I mean, there's been a lot of good points, I can obviously dive in here, but if we're going to delay it, maybe we should move on.
I'm, I'm in favor of some kind of flexibility, but I, I would ask my fellow council members to think about focusing, at least in part, on some objective basis. This is focused pretty much on skills, but if we could have some concrete, specific goals that are tied into our goals, and some statement of how they've progressed, and I do think that it is tied into the, the decision of whether we want to renew a contract. And that's, how else could we do it? I don't want somebody to have some side argument with, or some dispute with either of these senior staff people that I'm not aware of, I don't know what the, the issues are, and to say, I don't want to renew the contract, you know? I want to have it substance, if, if, or, or even to say, I want to renew the contract, I want to know why people want to renew the contract. That's, so, so if we have both a skills-based approach, with some kind of objective list, relatively short, that, on which we can judge whether they're doing the job that we want them to do.
So, to Amy's point, I know this came in yesterday, and people haven't had a chance, they don't have to read it now, but, you know, the ICMA handbook that came out two years ago specifically talks about customizing this to the individual municipality, so that's why Fred's doing this is a great idea. What you're talking about is what I took a shot at, in, in my annex, and we don't have to look at it now, but I mean, what I, but just for people's benefit, what I'm intending to do there, on the core administrative responsibilities, is capture the guidance that came from the ICM handbook toward the end that you're talking about. Talk about substantive responsibilities, not just, you know, the kind of other stuff that was in.
Right.
So.
Fred, how do you want to move forward with this?
I, I think we, we just go ahead and have a discussion, maybe have like, an hour and a half, have a meeting, see if we can wrap it up.
Okay, great. Want to, we need to vote on that, or do we just agree that we're going to?
I can make, I can work with any of these.
Well, can I make a suggestion? I guess we could do this, Audrey. Could Fred look at what I did, and come out with another green sheet?
Yes, I mean, you put it on in a rata sheet, I believe, I, so-
Could Fred look at what I did, and come up with another draft?
He can do a second try if he wishes, or, I mean, that's one way of handling it.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll try and come up with something that I pick up Amy's comments, and, and it'll be at straw man, it won't be perfect, but, but I'm also going to do another one, it's real simple, which I think maybe that, hearing everybody's point of view, and it's, it's simpler, it's better, in both cases.
Okay. Audrey, yes, I'm sorry.
Okay, and I just, it was something that Councilmember Forbes said, I just want to make it very clear, there is language, it doesn't talk about it being a contract, but in section thirty-three of the city charter, as far as the city manager's term is indefinite. I'm different. You can get rid of, I mean, you might have a contractual issue, but, you know, every two weeks, if I'm here, I'm happy. But, with the city manager, there's a different dance and procedure with chapter thirty, section thirty-three and thirty-four. He does serve an indefinite period of time. The agreement, the intent to renew the agreement, those are, for both of us, that's important, but in his, we need to make sure we follow section, you know, that section of the charter that also requires the evaluation of the city manager. So, I mean, there is some physicality of that.
Okay, great, thank you. Anything further, Fred?
Well, I want to make one comment, and that is, I did have the, not the handbook, but the PowerPoint thing from the International City Managers, and, and also their proposed rating system. And it became obvious to me that they're looking at it through the eyes of a city manager.
Correct.
And we're looking at it the eyes of a city council, what do we expect? And they don't necessarily beat, if anything, I would say they're giving the city manager more power than we would give the city manager. That's just a general statement.
But just as a, a ask here, if Amy has, I don't know if you had specific language suggested, or not, you had ideas from other places.
Well, I, I, I had prepared my materials from the point of view that I was referring the council to different aspects of them that I thought were valuable, but we have choices, and I didn't feel it was my position to make the choice, I was hopeful that, that we would look at that. But we have to decide how, we can have just like, words for the different skill levels, or we could have a whole paragraph. So, we have to decide whether the format of how we want to do these things, and then we, it'll be easy to say, to say what specific skill, skill levels we think are important.
Well, I'm just trying, to advance the ball and get done.
Right.
All right, I'm ju, I'm just suggesting that, could we have agreement that there will be one form, there's not a different form for every council person. Point two is, that will give obvious flexibility to, it will have numbers in it, but it will give flexibility to council members of how they approach those numbers, as long as, whether to use them or not, as long as they're providing appropriate feedback. All right? And then, third, we have an additional section with respect to responsibilities. Does that, does that, so, so if you took what I did, I'm not saying every last word, that's what I'm trying to do there.
Okay.
Can we move on, Mayor, because I think we're having that workshop now, so, let's go with Fred.
Well, I'm just trying to give him clear direction, rather than have us come back, because he's going to write something up. Okay?
Great. All right, we're going to move on, and you know what? It's twelve ten, yeah, we're going to take a fifteen-minute break. We'll see you at twelve twenty-five. Thank you.
Can we make that a little longer, so we can get some to eat?
Twelve thirty. All right, see you at twelve thirty. See you.